Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board, and thank you for attending. This is the fourth of five public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for leases for apartments, lofts, hotels, and other housing units subject to the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect leases commencing between October 1, 2025, and September through September 30, 2026. I will now take roll call. Please respond if present. Genesis Aquino.
Present.
Alex Armlovich.
Present.
Robert Erlich.
Present.
Harpit Gupta.
Present.
Reed Jordan.
Present.
Alec Schwartz.
Present.
Christina Smith.
Present.
Don Soltram.
Present.
Doug Apple.
I am present.
Let the record show that we have a quorum. The next meeting of this board will be a public hearing to comment on the proposed guidelines on the following date and time: June 27 at the New York City Department of Health, 125 War Street, between 10:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. Anyone who wish to comment on the proposed guidelines at the public hearing must sign up to speak. People wishing to speak at the public hearing can preregister in advance either through our website, nyc.gov/rgb, or by calling (212) 669-7480 from 9:00 to 5:00, Monday through For those who do not preregister for the hearings, registration is also available at the public hearing from 10 to 12 on the 27th. All our public hearings will be livestreamed, and Spanish interpretation will be provided at each hearing. We'll also accept comments on the proposed guidelines outside of our public hearings. You can submit written, audio, and video comments for the board to review through June 27. Instructions on how to submit these comments are available on the board's website or by calling the RGB. Our final vote on the guidelines will take place on Monday, June 30, starting at 7:00 p.m. at El Museo del Barrio in Manhattan. Doors open at 6:00 p.m. The public may attend in person or may watch the vote live by streaming on the RGB YouTube channel. Before we proceed, I'd like to go over the rules and procedures for those who are testifying before the board. If you wish to speak, you must confirm with RGB staff at the registration table located near the entrance of the hall in the back there. Speakers will not be called if they have not checked in at the registration table. There are Spanish interpreters here today. I think I see. When registering to speak, please notify the staff you'd like an interpreter. I will try to call several names in advance to let you know that you will be soon to be up to speak. If you have material to distribute to the board, please give them to the RGP staff sitting at the sign-in table in the back. I will attempt to alternate speakers between tenants and owners, but this may not always be possible. In order to accommodate as many speakers as possible, each speaker will have two minutes to give their testimony. Additional two minutes of speaking time will be given to those speakers utilizing interpretation services. To help speakers keep track of time, we have a clock. We'll start the clock when you begin speaking. The clock will beep once when the speaker has 30 seconds left, and will continue beeping when the allotted two minutes are up. If you are still speaking at the end of two minutes, I will ask you to quickly wrap up your testimony. And staff are also available to assist you with the microphones and remind you when your allotted time is completed. If you are handicapped and cannot come to the mic, please let us know, and we'll make sure we bring the mic to you. I understand that many speakers have a passion and speak from the heart. We want to hear all of what you have to say. However, we do ask that you be respectful, use nondiscriminatory language, and not make any overt physical threats towards members of the board or others. This type of language will not be tolerated, and if you continue to do so once warned, I may ask you to stop speaking. We expect many speakers, and the board wants to hear from as many of you as possible in the limited time we have for this hearing. We understand it may be difficult to say everything you want to hear in just two minutes, but please understand it's our responsibility to try to make sure everyone who's taken the time to come here and testify will have a fair opportunity to be heard. Thank you for your cooperation, and the board looks forward to hearing your comments regarding proposed rent adjustments. And I also now want to allow the Spanish interpreter to read this in the Spanish. Thank you.
Muy buenas tardes. Me gustaría darles la bienvenida a esta audiencia pública de la Junta de Normas de Alquiler de la Ciudad de Nueva York y agradecerles a todas y a todos por asistir. Esta es la cuarta de las cinco audiencias públicas que tomarán en consideración sus comentarios sobre los ajustes de alquiler propuestos para la renovación de contratos de alquiler de apartamentos, lofts, o altillos, hoteles, y otras unidades de viviendas sujetos a la Ley de Estabilización de Alquileres de 1969 y la Ley de Urgencia de Protección de Inquilinos de 1974. Estos ajustes afectarán la renovación de contratos de alquiler a partir del 1 de octubre de 2025 hasta el 30 de septiembre de 2026. Ahora pasaré lista. Por favor, respondan si están presentes. Genesis Aquino, presente. Alex Armlovich, presente. Robert Erlich, presente. Harpit Gupta, presente. Reed Jordan, presente. Alex Schwartz, presente. Christina Smith, presente. Adam Soltram, presente. And Doug Apple, presente. Que conste en actas, por favor, que hemos logrado un quorum en esta sesión. La próxima reunión de esta junta será una audiencia pública para comentar sobre las normas propuestas el 27 de junio en el Departamento de Salud de la Ciudad de Nueva York de 10 de la mañana hasta las 12 del mediodía. Cualquier persona que desee declarar sobre las normas propuestas en una audiencia pública deberá inscribirse para poder hablar. Los que deseen declarar en nuestra última audiencia pública podrán inscribirse con antelación, ya sea a través de nuestra página web, nyc.gov/rgb, o al llamar al (212) 669-7480, de lunes a viernes, de 9:00 de la mañana a 5:00 de la tarde. Para quienes no se hayan preinscrito, podrán hacerlo durante la audiencia pública que tendrá lugar el 27 de junio, de 10 de la mañana hasta las 12 del mediodía. Y esta audiencia se transmitirá en vivo, y habrá interpretación al español. También aceptaremos comentarios sobre las normas propuestas fuera de nuestras audiencias públicas. Pueden enviar comentarios por escrito, en audio, o en video, para que la junta los revise hasta el 27 de junio. Las instrucciones sobre cómo enviar estos comentarios estarán disponibles en el sitio web de la junta o al llamar a la RGB. Nuestra votación final sobre las normas se llevará a cabo el lunes 30 de junio a partir de las 7 de la noche en el Museo del Barrio en Manhattan. Las puertas se abrirán a las 6 de la tarde, y el público podrá asistir en persona o ver la votación en directo a través del canal de YouTube de la RGB. Antes de continuar, me gustaría repasar las normas y procedimientos para quienes declararán ante la junta hoy. Si desean declarar, deberán confirmar su presencia con el personal de la RGB en la mesa de inscripción situada cerca de la entrada de este salón justo atrás. No se llamarán aquellos que no se hayan inscrito con el personal de la mesa de inscripción. Habrá intérpretes españoles disponibles hoy, y cuando se inscriban para hablar, por favor, notifíquenle al personal si desean intérprete. Intentaré anunciar varios nombres con antelación para que sepan que pronto se les llamará para declarar. Si tienen material que desean distribuirle a la junta, deberán entregárselo al personal de la RGB que se encuentra en la mesa de inscripción justo en la entrada de este salón. Intentaré alternar entre inquilinos y propietarios para que ambos puedan declarar, pero esto no siempre será posible. Y para darle cabida al mayor número posible de declarantes, cada uno dispondrá de dos minutos para declarar. Se concederán, sin embargo, dos minutos adicionales a los declarantes que utilicen servicios de interpretación. Para ayudar a las personas que vayan a declarar a controlar su tiempo, contaremos con un reloj que verán en la tarima. Ese reloj se pondrá en marcha en cuanto empiecen a hablar, y emitirá un pitido una vez que queden 30 segundos, y seguirá emitiendo pitidos cuando se haya cumplido el tiempo asignado de dos minutos. Si continúan hablando al finalizar los dos minutos, les pediremos que concluyan rápidamente su testimonio. El personal está disponible para ayudarles con el micrófono y recordarles cuándo vaya finalizado su tiempo asignado. Entiendo que muchos declarantes hablan con pasión y desde el corazón, y queremos escuchar todo lo que tengan que decir. Sin embargo, les pedimos que sean respetuosos y que no hagan amenazas físicas explícitas hacia los miembros de la junta ni hacia otras personas. No se tolerará este tipo de lenguaje, y si alguien persiste en ello después de habérselo advertido, puede que le pidamos que deje de hablar. Esperamos contar con muchos declarantes, y la junta desea conocer sus opiniones en la medida de lo posible dentro del tiempo limitado que tenemos para esta audiencia. Entendemos que puede ser difícil decir todo lo que les gustaría decirnos en solo dos minutos, pero, por favor, comprendan que es nuestra responsabilidad tratar de garantizar que todas las personas que se hayan tomado el tiempo de venir aquí y declarar hoy tengan una oportunidad justa de que se les escuche. Muchas gracias por su colaboración. La junta desea verdaderamente escuchar sus comentarios sobre las normas propuestas para el ajuste de los alquileres.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. I'm going to call our first speaker, and then I'll call a couple others on deck. Our first speaker is Councilman Keith Powers. I believe he's here. Followed by Ilan Rabinowitz and Anna Greenberg. So the councilman is here, and then we'll have our next speakers. Is he not here? Oh, okay. It's hard to see. Okay, when he gets in, let us know, we'll come back. So let me call Ilan Rabinowitz, followed by Ann Greenberg. Sir.
Yo soy un propietario de un edificio de cuatro departamentos acá en Manhattan.
Good afternoon. My name is Ilan, and I am an owner of four apartments of a building here in Manhattan.
La mayoría son estabilizados.
The majority of them are rent-stabilized.
Tal cual yo puedo cobrar entre 1,100 y 1,500 dólares por mes en alquiler.
And of course, which means I can pay within 1,100 to 1,500 a month.
Al mismo tiempo, la ciudad me cobra 75,000 dólares al año en impuestos sobre la propiedad.
At the same time, the city charges me 75,000 dollars in taxes on the property every year.
Se van aumentando eso 8% por año. Acá estamos peleando entre 4% y 7%.
Those taxes go up 8% every year. Here, we are fighting for 4%, between 4% and 7% increase.
No tienes que ser matemático para saber que 1,560 dólares por departamento por mes es más del alquiler de 1,100 a 1,500 que yo puedo cobrar.
You don't have to be a mathematician to know that the 1,500 dollars that are charged per apartment a month are more than the 1,100 that I charge for rent a month.
Y además de eso, la ciudad sigue aumentando otros costos. Este año agregaron como seis leyes nuevos para inspecciones de gas, plomo, tachos de azuras nuevos, y otras cosas que aumentaron mis costos entre 400 y 500 dólares por mes por departamento. Así que ya pedí 1,500 dólares en impuestos, y tengo que agregar más o menos 500 dólares más para cumplir con esos requisitos.
Aside from these costs, there are also things that are being charged by the city now, six additional costs. You have the gas, you have lead paint, you have the garbage containers, and that's between 400 and 500 extra dollars a month, aside from what I have already, I have to pay on a monthly basis.
Así que les pido, les ruego, si ustedes están organizando acá contra los propietarios, estás peleando con la persona equivocada.
So I beg of you, if you're here fighting against the landlords, you're fighting against the wrong people.
La gente que quieres pelear es el próximo persona que va a hablar acá. Keith Powers está postulando para ser el borough president of Manhattan. Se fue un miembro del city council por muchos años. Él cada vez que había una oportunidad, se votó para subir su alquiler agregando más costos.
So I think the person you really have to fight against is Keith Powers, who will be here soon. I think he's running for borough president. He's actually the one that's voted in the past to raise the rent.
No, no para aumentar los alquileres, para aumentar los costos para ofrecer los alquileres. Si nosotros queremos...
Not for the rents, but for the costs, the costs that are being offered to raise the rent.
Así que si ustedes quieren un Nueva York accesible para tus amigos, para tus familiares, para tus vecinos, como yo...
So if you want accessible living space for yourself, for your neighbors, for your friends and family members, just like me...
No quejes acá con la junta, que ellos tienen un trabajo imposible. Ellos tienen que balancear los costos con los precios del alquileres y encontrar algo en medio. Lo que tiene que pelear es el alcalde. Lo que tiene que pelear es el gobernador, al city council, al borough president, y toda esa otra gente que vienen acá para decirte qué tanto quieren que bajen los alquileres mientras que hacen todo en su poder para subirlos.
Please don't come here and argue against the board. They have an impossible task as it is. You need to fight against the mayor, the governor, the borough president, and all these other people that come here and tell you that it's an impossible task to lower the rent, and do everything but help us.
Muchas gracias. And thank you for your comments about about respect here. The last few hearings have had some anti-Semitic comments in testimony, and I hope we won't see that again here. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to his... Keith Powers in the room? We also have, I believe, New York State Senator Brad Hoeyman Siegel. Senator, please.
Thank you very much. My name is State Senator Brad Hoeyman Siegel. I represent the 47th Senate District, which encompasses the West Side of Manhattan. We're in it right now, in this amazing space. Thank you to Symphony Space for allowing us to use this incredible space for this important hearing. I represent from Christopher Street, literally the base of the Stonewall Inn, birthplace of the LGBTQ human rights movement, all the way up to West 103rd. We like to say "from the gay bars to zay bars." Thank you, Chair Apple, members of the RGB, for your opportunity to submit testimony today. The RGB's research tells a clear story. While rent-stabilized tenants and landlords are seeing growing income, rent-stabilized landlords are seeing growing income and economic health, their tenants sink deeper into poverty. A rent freeze this year is not only justified, it is necessary. My Senate district includes some of the highest rents in the city, with the average rent for an Upper West Side apartment totaling $6,526 in March of 2025. This amounts to over a 70% increase since 2022. As market rate apartments in my district grow even more unaffordable, rent-stabilized apartments are the last refuge for older and lower-income constituents. Windfall profits for landlords and developers do not reflect broader economic health, as New York City poverty rate has risen to 25%, the highest rate in at least seven years. As a result, desperate New Yorkers are turning to government assistance to pay for food, healthcare, and mounting bills. In 2024, public benefit caseloads increased by 16.2%. At the same time, close to 17% of tenants in the metro area owe rent arrears, the second-highest proportion of households in the country. These economic woes are felt especially hard among rent-stabilized households, which are more likely to contain an older adult, a child, or a person with a disability. The data, the economic and institutional environment, and RGB precedent all support the case for a rent freeze. I urge this board to order a rent freeze. Thank you very much. And let me personally say, on a personal note, I want to thank each and every one of you for your service. It means so much to me, whether you're a landlord, a tenant, or appointed by someone else, your service is really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Greenberg, followed by Ron Cohen and Pablo Zivolos. Ms. Greenberg.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So my name is Ann Greenberg. I'm a senior citizen living in Peter Cooper Village, and I'm on the board of the Stuyvesant Town Peter Cooper Village Tenants Association. Landlords must be the most inept businesspeople. Although guaranteed a 5% profit for hardship, they always plead poverty and ask for more, and the RGB public members are happy to oblige. Look at the math for the past three years. Increases as high as 5%, an effective 6%, and 5 1/4%. Depending on the lease term a tenant shows, their rent went up at least a total of 7.9% or as much as 10 1/2%. I ask you, Doug Apple, Harpit Gupta, Alex Schwartz, Reed Jordan, Alexander Armlovich, did your income go up even 7.9%? Do you have a savings account or a CD paying anywhere near that? What about Social Security or your investments? Maybe some of you got a nice juicy bonus, but you expect tenants who are already rent-burdened to shell out even more to satisfy landlords' insatiable greed. Another number: 12.1% landlord's NOI in buildings with stabilized units, and it beats last year's 10.4%. And what about 0.98%, the vacancy rate for rent-stabilized apartments? And according to attorney, former RGB executive director Tim Collins, you have inflicted cumulative rent increases 13 1/2% more than what would have kept owners whole. That excess is baked into our rents forever. So when you callously throw out preliminary ranges of 1.75 to 4.75, and 3.75 to 7.75, I question whether you're really number nerds. Consideration for what tenants need and deserve and what the city needs never come into play. But hey, you could still freeze the rent. It's time to go low. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Councilman Powers has joined us.
Thank you. Sorry for my delinquency. I want to echo my neighbor Ann Greenberg, who is a great tenant advocate, and say, "Go low, freeze the rent, give tenants the relief they deserve this year." Am I right? My name is Keith Powers. I'm a city council member for the 4th district in Manhattan, representing the East Side. I'm a proud tenant myself and the proud representative of rent-stabilized tenants across my district. I want to start by stating the obvious: The proposed increases that have been put out, especially the 7.75% increase for the two-year leases, go way beyond what is reasonable as to pay tenants in the coming year. If you are a senior citizen on a fixed income or a young family trying to hold on to the dream of living in New York City, those rent increases create economic challenges for tenants, not only in my district but across the five boroughs. We should be making it easier, not harder, to build a stable life in this city, and for New Yorkers struggling to keep up with the rising costs, some of those numbers that are being thrown out here would make it impossible. After years of increases to tenants' rents and rising hardship for everyday New Yorkers, I'm asking the Rent Guidelines Board to echo the words of Ann: "To go low," to stop these ridiculous increases and those proposed numbers, and to stand up for tenants. I will submit the rest of my testimony because it is long, but I am here to make sure, on behalf of my tenants, the tenants of Manhattan, and the tenants across the city, that they know they have representatives here who are here to fight to make sure that we protect their cost of living here and we tackle the cost of affordability. I want to thank the Rent Guidelines Board. I know you have a tall task ahead of you, but we ask you to listen to the voices of the tenants here and the ones who are coming in today and outside, throughout the city, to hear the everyday challenges that the middle class and working class are facing when it comes to affordability. And yes, we have a lot of other goals here in this city, too. We need to build a lot more housing. We need to make sure that we can build housing in every single community to accommodate the great demand on the greatest city on earth. But for the tenants that are there and are fighting and want to hang on, they need to know they have a Rent Guidelines Board and a city government that will stand up for them. So I say what she said: Go low. Rent freeze. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I now call Ron Cohen, followed by Pablo Zivolos and Hannah Lawson. Mr. Cohen.
Good evening. My name is Ron Cohen, and I want to thank the RGB and everyone here for the opportunity to speak. I'm a lifelong New Yorker, born in Queens, high school in the Bronx, lived in Brooklyn, and raised my family right here on the Upper West Side. I love this city and the diverse, hard-working people who call it home. They deserve safe, stable, and sustainable housing. I've spent over 20 years in New York City commercial real estate with a company called Besen Partners. I've seen the market go through many cycles, but what we're facing today is hurting both tenants and landlords alike. It's the result of well-intended policies that unfortunately aren't working in practice. Contrary to public perception, not all landlords are greedy, deep-pocketed corporations. Up to 50% of the rental market is owned by small mom-and-pop landlords, owners of buildings with 10 units or fewer, many of whom who are struggling. The 2025 RGB report cites a 12% rise in landlord profits, but that's misleading. The jump largely reflects deregulated units in prime Manhattan. In contrast, rent-stabilized buildings, particularly older ones outside of Manhattan, are seeing operating income fall. In the Bronx, for example, inflation-adjusted net income dropped 7.6%. Right now, the median stabilized rent is $1,328, while the average cost to operate a unit is $1,379, meaning many landlords are losing money every month. Insurance premiums alone have tripled in some areas. For example, a 38-unit walk-up building I'm working on in the Bronx at present now pays $3,000 per unit annually just for insurance. Meanwhile, rent increases have lagged far behind inflation. 14% in aggregate increases over the past decade compared with 23% inflation, creating massive financial pressure. Property values are dropping, defaults are rising, and buildings are falling into disrepair. Just this month, an 83-unit building located on West 65th Street up here on the Upper West Side sold for 42% of its 2017 price, a value equivalent to its 2008 value. An estimated 45,000 to 70,000 stabilized units are sitting empty...
If you could wrap up, sir, please.
20 more seconds. Because owners never recuperate the cost to renovate them under current rules. If we want to improve supply and affordability, we need to consider reasonable rent adjustments and explore policy changes like a rent reset to bring these homes back into circulation. In closing, rent-stabilized housing is a vital part of New York's future. Let's ensure we have the right tools to preserve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Pablo Zivolos, followed by Hannah Lawson and Maria Mercado. Mr. Zivolos.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Pablo Zivolos, and I'm a tenants' rights attorney testifying in support of a rent freeze. A freeze... A freeze is needed to guard against the speculative and unwarranted rent increases the Rent Stabilization Law was enacted to counter amidst what the law also described as an acute housing shortage and proposed cuts to federal assistance in housing programs, situations that we are facing today. Between 1990 and 2023, in buildings containing rent-stabilized units, inflation-adjusted income from rent has increased by 37%, while costs have increased by 31%, facilitating a net operating income increase of 48%. Between 2022 and 2023 alone, NOI increased by 12%, and NOI increased in 83% of community districts across the city. Simply put, landlords' economic indicators, many of which continue to strengthen post-pandemic, neither warrant nor justify a rent increase this year. While rents continue to soar and rent collection nears decade-long highs, the post-pandemic economic recovery continues to evade many New York City tenants. In contrast to the national data, inflation-adjusted average wages for private sector New York City workers have decreased since 2021. Many of my clients are trying to get back on their feet, and they tell me that between the rent and other costs like food, healthcare, and raising children, there is not enough to go around. 70% of the lowest-income renters and 30% of rent-stabilized tenants without vouchers pay a majority of their incomes in rent. Rental assistance is in short supply, and proposed cuts to federal housing assistance would place thousands of households at risk of eviction. And with about 1 in 150 apartments renting for under $2,400 being vacant, there is little chance of moving elsewhere. These tenants cannot afford an increase. In light of the imbalance between landlords' economic indicators and the needs of rent-burdened tenants, I urge this board to adopt a rent freeze. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, sir. Hannah Lawson. Hannah Lawson, followed by Maria Mercado and Guadalupe Brito.
My name is Hannah Lawson. I have been living in New York City for nine years and in my rent stabilized apartment in Washington Heights for nearly four. I moved here to attend Fordham University on a full-ride academic scholarship. I graduated in 2020 at the start of the COVID-19 pandemic with a BA in art history, a BS in biological sciences, and three theses in sustainable architecture. It took me three years to find a job after the pandemic. My job salary now is only $50,000. Before taxes, over half of all my income goes to rent. I have no debt, I have no student loans, and I graduated from one of this city's top universities as a Presidential Honors scholar. I should be one of the few in my generation that is doing superlatively, and yet I, too, am merely scraping by. I am your best-case scenario, and I'm standing here to tell you I have nothing left to give. I cannot imagine what is the assumption about the economic state of our city if you think raising the rent at all is the correct decision. The pandemic is over, but the infrastructural effects on our city's economy are far from fixed. And if I, me, am a solid representation of the best-case scenario for a recent college graduate in this city, and I still can barely afford to live here, there is a serious problem. Your solution should begin with prioritizing keeping smart, talented, and driven individuals such as myself in this city to lead us into the bright future we all deserve. Freeze the rent.
Thank you. Maria Mercado, Guadalupe Brito, followed by Ruben Florencio Ramirez.
Buenas tardes, señoras y señores.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Mi nombre es Maria Mercado. Soy miembro de Movimiento por Justicia del Barrio.
My name is Maria Mercado, and I am part of Movimiento de Justicia from El Barrio.
Estoy aquí representando a todos los inquilinos de mi organización.
I am here representing all of the tenants of my organization.
Nosotros luchamos por vivienda digna y en contra del desplazamiento.
We fight for just living spaces and against displacement.
Ustedes pueden pensar que nosotros somos repetitivos.
You might think that we're repetitive.
Porque estamos aquí exigiendo no más aumento de renta.
Because we're here demanding no more increases to the rent.
Nosotros somos los inquilinos que vivimos en condiciones deplorables.
But we are the ones that are the tenants living in deplorable conditions.
En estos momentos ya pagamos rentas muy altas.
We already pay exorbitant rents.
Y los dueños de los edificios solo piensan en aumentar la renta.
And the building owners only think to increase that rent.
No en darnos un buen mantenimiento a los apartamentos.
And, of course, not to provide us with good maintenance with regards to our apartments.
Los edificios están muy sucios e infectados de ratas.
The buildings are dirty and full of vermin.
Las personas que viven en la calle viven en mejores condiciones que nosotros.
People who are living on the streets are actually in better living conditions than we are.
Ellos no pagan renta.
They don't pay rent.
Y nosotros, después que trabajamos duro para pagar nuestra renta...
And in our situation, we work very hard to pay our rent.
No nos dan un buen servicio.
We then don't get good service.
Todos nosotros exigimos lo justo, no aumento de renta.
All of us are demanding what is just, no more rent increases.
Los caseros solo piensan en llenar sus bolsillos.
Owners only think about lining their pockets.
Les voy a dar un ejemplo.
I'll provide you with an example.
Los caseros hacen medios reparos.
Owners only make halfway repairs.
Y a los pocos días estamos con el mismo problema.
And a few days later, we are facing the same issues once again.
Justicia para los inquilinos del barrio.
We need justice for tenants in El Barrio.
Justicia para los inquilinos del barrio.
We need justice for the tenants in El Barrio.
Justicia para los inquilinos del barrio.
Justice for the tenants in El Barrio.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Guadalupe Brito, followed by Ruben Florencio Ramirez. Please.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Guadalupe Brito.
My name is Guadalupe Brito.
Soy parte del Movimiento por Justicia del Barrio.
I'm also part of the movement Justicia por El Barrio.
No me he cambiado de apartamento cinco veces en 15 años.
I have changed apartments five times in the last 15 years.
En todos estos cambios hemos tenido malas experiencias.
And with all these changes, we've had horrible experiences.
Una familia tiene que tener dos trabajos.
A family has to have at least two jobs.
Para poder pagar el costo de la renta.
In order to be able to pay the rent.
Se tienen que sacrificar algunas cosas.
And, of course, you have to sacrifice certain things.
Mientras todo va poniéndose caro.
While everything continues to go up.
La renta también quieren aumentar.
You also want to increase the rent.
Es necesario que la renta sea congelada para tener una vida más digna.
We need to have a rent freeze for our life to be fair and just.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Mi nombre es Ruben Florencio Ramirez, y soy parte de Movimiento por Justicia del Barrio.
My name is Ruben Florencio Ramirez, and I am also part of the movement Justice for El Barrio.
Una organización que lucha por vivienda digna.
An organization that seeks out just and fair living spaces for all.
El día de hoy estamos aquí para exigir a ustedes que no queremos ningún aumento de renta.
Today, we are here to demand that you not give us a rent increase.
Esa es nuestra demanda por hoy.
That is our demand today.
El acceso a vivienda digna en las ciudades cada vez más caro.
Access to fair housing in the city is more and more expensive every day.
Yo, al igual que millones de migrantes con nuestras familias, no queremos ningún aumento de renta.
I, like millions of others, immigrants and families, do not want a rent increase.
Todo lo contrario, queremos vivienda digna y accesible para personas de bajo recursos.
On the contrary, we want accessible housing for people with low resources.
Yo en lo personal sufro para pagar mi renta mes con mes.
I suffer every single month in trying to make my rent payment.
El alto costo de vida nos afecta mucho en salud, trabajo, y poder económico.
The high cost of living affects us in terms of our job, our health, and, of course, to pay for our own living space.
Reiteramos nuestra demanda, ningún aumento de renta.
We reiterate our demand, no more rent increases.
El barrio unido jamás será vencido. El barrio unido jamás será vencido. El barrio unido jamás será vencido.
El barrio united shall never be defeated.
Alto al aumento de renta.
A stop to the rent increases.
Alto al aumento de renta.
Stop to the rent increases.
Alto al aumento de renta.
Stop to the rent increases.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe State Senator Robert Jackson is here. Please, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'm State Senator Robert Jackson, and I have the honor to represent the 31st Senatorial District, home to Inwood, Washington Heights, and parts of the Bronx, including Kingsbridge Heights, Kingsbridge University Heights, and Morris Heights. And I serve approximately 339,000 constituents, families whose very survival hinges on housing stability. And tonight, I speak with urgency, with purpose, and with moral clarity. I stand in firm opposition to the Rent Guidelines Board proposed increases of 1.75% to 4.75% for one-year leases and 3.75% to 7.75% for two-year leases beginning this October. And these hikes have driven working-class New Yorkers and driving them already suffocating with rising costs and stagnant wages are close to the edge, if not over it. And let's dispense with the myth. Landlords are not operating at a loss. According to the Rent Guidelines Board's Own 2020 Income, 2025 Income Expense Study, landlords' net operating income, what's left after expenses, is increased by 12.1%. Between 2022 and 2023, even after adjusting for inflation, there's still an 8% gain. Meanwhile, operating costs increased by 3.8%. And this is a crisis for the landlord. It's a payday for the landlord. And meanwhile, tenants face a starkly different reality. According to the Rent Guidelines Board 2024 Housing Supply Report, the city's rental vacancy rate dropped to a historic low of 1.4%, the lowest ever recorded. And at the same time, the Board's Income and Affordability Study revealed that the number of New Yorkers on care assistance rose by 16%, unemployment increased by 5%, homelessness rose nearly 9%, and residential evictions surged by 23%. And this is not a moment to raise rents. It is a moment to raise our standards of care and decency. And landlord claims that they need these increases for maintenance, yet one of the top 311 complaints across the city remains poor building conditions and negligent management. And in short, tenants are being charged more and getting less. And across my district, the consequence of negligence is scarcity. And everywhere, in Washington Heights, the notorious landlord Daniel Arben Salome was arrested not once but twice last year for willingness ignoring more than over 700 housing code violations, including lead paint, mold, electrical hazards, vermin infestation. And while tenants endured unlivable conditions, he continued to cash rent checks and turn a profit. In Morris Heights, tragedy struck on December 11, 2023, when a building at 1915 Billingsley Terrace partially collapsed due to the landlord's gross negligence removing structural support. And over 100 people were displaced in an instant, and proof of what happened when rent revenue is hoarded, not reinvested. But my office hears from constituents every week who's drained their savings just to keep up. Single parents, retirees, immigrant families, they all live with fear that one day rent hikes could push them into eviction or homelessness. A vote to raise rent is not a vote to displace them. We must be clear-eyed. Housing is not just an economic issue, it's a human right. And policies force people from their homes are acts of violence against the working class. The choice before you is not theoretical, it's painfully real. Will working people be allowed to remain in the city just the city they built? Or will they be priced out, pushed aside, and raised from the future? So stand with the tenants, reject these increases, and let history record when it mattered most, your justice. The Rent Guidelines Board must put people before profit. Freeze the rent. Anything less is not irresponsible, it's unjust. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. And now, Councilwoman Carmen Della Rosa. Please.
Good evening. I'm Councilmember Carmen Della Rosa, representing District 10 in northern Manhattan, also the communities of Washington Heights, Inwood, and Marble Hill, home of the largest stock of rent stabilized units in the state of New York. Almost a year ago, I testified before the Rent Guidelines Board calling for a rent freeze. Today, I return with the same request, but with much more urgency. My district in northern Manhattan has over 46,000 rent stabilized units. Yet the majority of the population in Washington Heights and Inwood are rent burdened, meaning that they contribute over 30% of their pre-tax income to rent. An average of 90% of our constituent cases address housing insecurity, and the average has remained consistent since I entered office in 2022. Prior to COVID-19, most New Yorkers faced significant financial strain from rent. COVID and inflation has further exacerbated the housing crisis in communities like northern Manhattan. Having experienced for years the plight of tenants, rents continue to increase every single year since COVID crisis began, leaving tenants behind while prioritizing landlord profits. Following the lifting of the eviction moratorium in 2022, eviction filings went up 167%, with more than 3,000 evictions by June 30 of 2023. Our shelter and housing systems are overwhelmed. There is insufficient housing stock, tens of thousands of which are warehoused by landlords who put profit over people. By design, in an unfair system, the most impacted communities look like mine, with approximately 70% of rent stabilized households being households of color. Black and brown families are moving out of our state at a higher rate, as shown in drops in school enrollment, often citing the unaffordability of our city. Soaring food insecurity in my district leave residents with heartbreaking decisions. Family need to pay their rent or feed their children. When landlords cite the cost of everything has gone up, making repairs more expensive, they should not exclude New York renters from that line of thinking. Tenants do not have buildings they can sell off when it is no longer profitable for them to recoup funds. The aging population on a fixed income cannot go get a second job to cover the rent. Young native New Yorkers are struggling for independence and the space to start their own families. Unable to find affordable apartments, contributing to overcrowding condition in many apartments as people are forced to split the costs to avoid becoming homeless. As my constituents have often reminded me, landlords find the money when it comes to donating to pro-landlord super PACs during election cycles to protect their interests, but can't seem to find the money to give tenants and their clients a better quality of life. The plight behind the need to raise rents appears insincere in our realities. Tenants in units such as 705 and 709 West 170th Street, as Senator Jackson just testified, under the neglect of the worst landlord in New York City, Ob Shalom, spending limited funds on repairs and maintenance that the landlord should have provided. Our tenants are at a breaking point, and an increase will not make their lives better. They'll be stuck paying rent they can't afford as repairs remain ignored, accumulating housing court cases and facing a board year after year in a grueling, unfair process to avoid homelessness in their decaying homes. Today, I am here to join the voices of tenants across the borough and across the city, calling on you, on all of you, to do the right thing. New Yorkers do not deserve a rent increase. They desperately need compassion and a reprieve in the form of a freeze to continue to fight for the homes and communities they've built. In what is supposed to be a city of opportunity and the greatest city in the world, I join my constituents in asking you for a rent freeze. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call up Sam Greenberg, followed by Damian Tejada, and Spiros Sonos. Mr. Greenberg.
Hello, my name is Sam. I'm with the Party for Socialism Liberation. I am physically disabled. I was born here and I was raised here. I spent my entire life living in New York, and I have loved every single moment of it. I am also terrified of public speaking. But I am here today because I do not know how much longer I can live in the city. Every single week, you have state and federal governments cutting vital services that we need, whether that be Medicaid or social security, to the point where simply living is becoming extremely difficult. My wheelchair, for example, costs $10,000. I have constant medical expenses that cost tens of thousands or more dollars. And this is, of course, not even mentioning utilities, groceries, and so much more that are constantly... that are constantly increasing because, you know, these people are chasing ever greater profits. And now we are here talking about the possibility of rents increasing again. Simply put, I and so many people like me cannot afford to live in the city any longer. You know, sometimes I hear people say like, "Oh, why are there so few born and raised New Yorkers left in the city?" Well, my answer to that is, look around you, right? We cannot afford to live here, right? We are being forced out of a city that we love, even though we want to stay. And for what? You know, we have landlords sitting here earning more and more money. They say that they need this money so they can help repair things, but I'm sure so many people in this room can tell you, that's not happening, right? We don't need higher rents. What we need is actual tenant control over the rent guidelines. What we need is an increase in rent-controlled and rent-stabilized apartments that are constantly being demolished and turned into luxury housing that people cannot afford. What we need is actually guaranteed housing. We built these housings, right? The working class built the housing. We should be able to live in them. No matter what happens, we need to be making sure that we're getting organized. Rent stabilization came here to the city because tenants stood up and did not budge. So we need to get organized now. Thank you.
Damian Tejada, followed by Spiros Sonos, and Yun Chen. Mr. Tejada.
Hi, good evening. Well, I'm up here with everyone, alongside everyone in the room, to denounce the rent hikes and call for a rent freeze. I've lived in this city my entire life, moving in between Bronx and Manhattan. I've seen the short-term and long-term effects of gentrification and displacement in every single neighborhood that I've lived in. And so I'd like to speak about the working-class experience here for New Yorkers, right? Because that's who's in this room right now. That's who makes up the majority of this city. That's who makes up the majority of the people who are living in dire situations. It is unreasonable. I'm here to say that an increase of 7.75% for rent-stabilized housing is ridiculous. It is unreasonable that landlords are allowed to raise the rent for operating costs while we continue to live in conditions that don't get any better. When over 50% of our wages go into our rent, go into our housing, and we still live in the same level of housing. When the heat and the hot water don't work properly. When I have to do the maintenance and repairs in my own apartment. When the cost should more than cover those services. It is an unjust increase when New York City landlords in the last year alone have made a 12% profit, and they want to get up here and talk about operating costs. Shame on them. Shame. The borough of Manhattan is one of the most expensive places to live on the planet. We don't live in a vacuum. These rent hikes come at a time when the cost of living in this city is at an all-time high. Due to inflation wages, due to inflation, wages that have staggered, the prices of groceries, goods, gas, and utilities are the highest it's ever been. When the transportation costs keep going up and working people continue having to foot the bill. We can thank the MTA for that. When we are stuck paying debts of all types, right? Student debts, predatory loans. When the taxes that we pay don't even go towards the infrastructure of the neighborhoods that we live in. They come at a time when good, hard-working, honest people are constantly living under threat of deportation, who can't afford medical crisis or an emergency. It's more than unjust. The rent increase is criminal. So check it. I'm gonna wrap this up because I want to hear some of the other voices in my community here. And I'm gonna address the two groups here. One significant and one not significant. First, the not significant group, Rent Guidelines Board. You were undemocratically appointed by the mayor, the sham mayor of New York City, Eric Adams. You do not represent the people in this room. No one here voted for you. And if you vote for an increase, I want you to know that you are sending the elderly, adults, and children to bed hungry. Shame on you if you vote for this increase. Now to my significant group, to my working people. They don't speak on behalf of us. We didn't vote them in. We are the majority of this city. We make up the majority of this city. It wouldn't run without us. We run this city. It was working people who created rent control. And together, we can build a more affordable, rent-controlled New York City. We demand a rent freeze and nothing less. My name is Damian. I'm with the Party for Socialism Liberation. And I just got one more thing to ask y'all.
Thank you, sir.
What do we want?
Rent freeze!
What do we want?
Rent freeze!
And when do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Rent freeze!
And when do we want it?
Now!
Thank you. Power to the people.
Thank you. Spiros Sonos, Yun Chen, and Kayla Popichet. Sir.
Hello, my name is Spiros, and I am the New York State Executive of the American Communist Party. It has come under our attention that yet again, our government is putting the interests of speculators and landowners ahead of the popular demands of the working class and is considering to siphon away even more of their wages from their own pockets. Me and my comrade brothers and sisters have attended and observed past meetings, and we can't help but feel angry at the sight of tenants, both young and old, pleading, begging even, a board that is composed of a majority of real estate, landlord, and other property interest groups that we are supposed to somehow trust that they will adhere to the popular demand to freeze the rent and do right by us. I am not here to beg, and I am not here to plead either, but I am here to tell. Instead of targeting the largest real estate and land-developing monopolies like Blackstone that are responsible for reducing the supply stock of residential units, instead of dissolving tax breaks, which makes the city lose billions a year in tax revenue for these developers to build luxury condos that no one can afford, instead of targeting those who sit on vacant properties and accrue value for speculative purposes while our tenants are being, while our citizens are being displaced, the property interests of this board, who answer to the property interests of our government, wants to raise the rents of over 2 million people within this city. It's even more insulting when the landlords themselves cry victim for the high taxes and high operational costs, when in reality, all they do is pass the burden on to the renters who still want to say to our faces how rents need to increase. The writing is on the wall. Raising the rents may not be the straw that breaks the camel's back, but in due time, a crisis will come when workers, let alone those who subsist on welfare, will be unable to deliver those razor-thin profit margins that these capitalists depend on. And all hell will break loose. Housing is for living in, not for speculation. Freeze the rent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Yun Chen, Kayla Popichet, and Casey McNaughton. Ms. Chen.
Hello,大家好.
Hi, my name is Yun Chen, and I'm a member of Chinatown Tenants Union. I'm here testifying today on behalf of our 250-member Tenant Union in Chinatown. The rent is already so high that working people cannot afford to live. We've been talking to our neighbors, and we met a father in the park. He works six days a week and currently only has one day a week to spend with his daughter. If you raise the rent, he won't be able to see his children anymore. Do you understand the effect that this has on families? This is a lifetime of sorrow and trauma for these children. For many of the kids in Chinatown, they wake up in the morning, their dad already went to work. They go to bed at night, and their dad's still not home from work. Their dad has to work, so their dad becomes a stranger. In Lower East Side in Chinatown right now, families making more than $250,000 a year are flooding into the neighborhood, and families making less than $100,000 a year are being displaced out. Chinatown has almost 50% rent-regulated apartments. If there wasn't rent regulation, there would be no Chinatown. Without Chinatown, what will all the tourists come to see? Won't that affect New York City's economy? You all come to Chinatown to eat and take pictures and play. Do you understand the struggles of families in the neighborhood? Right now, in Chinatown, families of four to five are crammed into one room. They want better, but they can't afford to find somewhere with more space. In one apartment, there's two to three families living there. You have to wait in line to use the kitchen, and you have to wait in line to use the bathroom. If you raise the rent, we don't know how to keep living.
我们需要免加租.
We need a rent freeze. We want to live in dignity, and we want a rent freeze. We want to stop evictions, and we want to stop deportations. We need to protect our neighborhoods, and only unity is strength.
我们需要免加租.
We need a rent freeze.
谢谢大家.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kayla, Kayla Popichet, Casey McNaughton, and Fernanda Perez.
Hello, my name is Kayla Popichet, and I am a member of the New York Chapter of the American Communist Party. I'm a New Yorker, born and raised, working in tenant advocacy for nearly 10 years now. And year after year, I've watched community members come to the Rent Guidelines Board to share their woes which fall on deaf ears. We are demanding from a board that is chaired by a real estate CEO and all but three members who represent private sector interest in price gouging the working class to contradict their own paychecks. This board is merely bureaucratic theater. The decisions were already made. When housing is treated as a commodity, decisions will always prioritize the interests of capital. So I'm not talking to the board tonight. I'm talking to the people who make this city run but are struggling to stay in it. Most rent-stabilized buildings in the city aren't owned by mom-and-pop landlords. They're owned by big corporate firms, landlords with thousands of units. The top 10 landlords alone own more than 50,000 rent-stabilized apartments. So these aren't people renting out their basements. They are companies backed by banks, asset managers, and private equity firms. The most recent city data shows that landlords of rent-stabilized units in our city are currently collecting an average of 1786 per apartment while only spending actually 1,000 on operating costs, yielding a profit margin of over 35%. All while claiming that they need rent hikes to survive. Now, you multiply that by hundreds of units, and you're looking at millions in annual income. And those profits have been rising for the last three decades. And yet, tenants, we are told that we have to accept yearly rent hikes because landlords' costs are going up. But even with inflation, insurance hikes, and labor costs, landlords' profits still outpace their expenses. So what we're paying for is to preserve a rate of return. And that's what this is all about. This is about profit. To us, these buildings are our homes, but to them, they're assets. And when profit margins shrink even slightly, they respond by pushing tenants out, holding units vacant, or lobbying our government for higher rents. There are tens of thousands of rent-stabilized apartments sitting empty right now, completely withheld off the market. And not because there's no demand, but because the legal rent is too low for these owners to get the return that they expect. So that is market manipulation. In this city, in this system, landlords have control over the land that they do not live on and people they don't know. And that control is backed by the law, by the courts, and by this board. So our power is not in this room begging the rich for crumbs, but it is with our collective organization of the working class. This city isn't suffering from a housing shortage. It is a surplus of greed that we're suffering from. And we have to stop asking for mercy and start building real power. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey McNaughton, Fernanda Perez.
Hi there. My name is Casey McNaughton.
Sayed Ali, sorry.
You're all good. I'm a member leader with the Youth Alliance for Housing, and I'm speaking as a rent-stabilized tenant in Astoria, Queens. My family was priced out of their neighborhoods in New York City almost 27 years ago, and now I'm being priced out of mine. Right now, I'm rent-burdened. Approximately 42% of my income goes to rent. And if my rent increases even a percentage, I'm gonna have to make some really hard decisions about my life, about the medical care that I and my family rely on, about how I can be a caregiver to my aging father and my sister. And ultimately, it will determine if I can live in my home any longer. Last year, it took me calling 311 three different times for my landlord to turn on the heat. Water damage is everywhere in the apartment from a leak caused by a poorly maintained facade that took seven years to repair. Yet, I know that landlords made 12% last year. 12%. And what did my landlord do with that money? He gut-renovated three of the non-rent-stabilized apartments and hiked up the rent another $1,700 in those apartments. He is making out like a bandit. That money is not returning to my apartment or any of the rent-stabilized unit in my building. My neighbors jokingly say that we will never be able to move somewhere else, and it's not a joke. We look around at what we have, and we realize it's all we got. And so I'd like my building to be well-maintained, and I'd like the rent to be frozen. This board does a lot of talking about data. I have seen you guys pour over it so much in the past couple of months. And look around this room. This room is filled with living data points. People here are begging you to freeze the rent. You are kicking people out of their homes. These rent hikes kill us. There is a human cost of these rent increases, and that's why I'm asking the board today to reconsider these ranges and instate a rent freeze. But we really deserve rent rollbacks. Thank you.
Thank you. Fernanda Perez, Sayed Ali, and Emily Rodriguez.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Fernanda Perez. Soy miembro de Ciudad Camino a Nueva York y soy residente en Brooklyn por casi seis años.
Good afternoon, my name is Fernanda Perez. I am part of Make the Road New York, and I have lived in the city for several years.
我是rent stabilized 公寓的房东。
我是公寓 rent stabilized 的房东， 在352 Bleeker Street，Meker Street。
我在这里说话不容易，
我在这里说话有点难听，
我多次打电话给 311， 为了防止寒冷而进行热敷。我也遭受了房东的骚扰。
我也遭受房东的骚扰。
我觉得我没有权利抱怨， 因为成为房东的不公平。
如为房东而做 nothing。
谢谢法律的帮助， 我来到了纽约的新道路， 我拿到了我的合同。
我感谢 Make the Road New York 给我的帮助， 因为我能获得 lease renewal。
即使工作不是好的， 你努力工作，但房租还得付。
就算工作或工作不是最好的，
用尽全力，
就是这样，和平。
因为寒冷，担心和害怕？
我们为什么付更多的钱， 生活在恐惧， 生在寒冷， 生在恐惧？
我的收入大约 40% 要付房租。
我的收入大约 40% 要付房租。而一个额外的增加是不公平的。
我从最深处的心里问你， 请不要对我们低头。
我从最深处的心里问你， 请不要对我们低头。
不批准今年的房租提高。
不批准今年的房租提高。
想想我们， 在无声中受苦的人。
想想我们， 在无声中受苦的人。
在我们一直站立，
那些总是站在我们脚下， 因为我们没有其他选择。
请不要提高房租。
请不要提高房租。谢谢。
谢谢，女士。Sayed Ali, followed by Emily Rodriguez, and then Brandon Barrera. Mr. Ali.
我叫 Ali， 我是纽约市 longtime resident， 我是民主党委员会的新成员。我想补充一下刚才 Kayla 和 Spiros 提到的， 并提供详细的说明， 让我告诉你 A&E Real Estate， 由 Douglas Eisenberg 管理， 这个委员会帮助他们把我们的房子变成 ATMs。所以在 2021 年，A&E 合同中提出了 506 亿美元的贷款， 从 JP Morgan Chase 利用 31 个房产， 包含 53 个建筑， 有3531 个公寓。但是到 2024 年，这笔贷款 default 了。这笔贷款价值比率从 71% 升到了 200%。但是，他们倒塌之前，A&E 系统地提取了 millions 在 permanent rent increases，A&E 对 systematic fraud， 以及在 2015 年和 2017 年， DHCR 授权了 92% 的 MCI 应用城市。而每年，这个委员会增加 additional 增加， 知道 landlords like A&E 使用 approved raises 来服务债务， 不维护建筑。A&E 的506 亿美元债务需要 massive rent extraction 在服务它。每年你投票的 annual increase 项目， 帮助他们支付 JP Morgan Chase 的债务。当你投票提高房租， 以“运营费用”为标准， 你真正投票的是 subsidize Wall Street speculation。现在 A&E 面临 foreclosure， Wells Fargo 在7月2024 年提交， 他们的 Ponzi 策案倒塌， 但是损失很大， 千万房东在 inflated rates， inflated rents， 根据 DHCR 的 rubber stamped MCI， 加上你的 annual increases。A&E 支付了 540,000 万到 attorney general 的 illegal buyouts， 而这就是你的 guidelines 体系。A&E 的商业模式 explicitly 目标是“ heavily rent stabilized” buildings， 他们从 pension funds 和 endowments， meaning Wall Street money， 通过 DHCR 的 MCI loophole， 和你 promised annual increases。这个委员会企图保护房东， 你的 annual rent increases 提供了 baseline， 使得过度 leveraged speculation 贡献。你给 landlords like A&E 需要的 cushion， 他们承担巨大的债务， 知道 DHCR 的 MCI 和你的 increases， 他们会从我们那里提取足够的资金， 以支付他们的 lenders。停止 approval rent increases， 仅服务 voluntary debt。停止 DHCR 的合作伙伴， 在整个骗局中， 或者 simply admit 你真的是一艘保护船， 食物来源的 financial parasites， 饲养纽约的 working class。谢谢。
谢谢。Emily Rodriguez, Brandon Barrera, and Audrey Lindsay. Ms. Rodriguez.
你好，我是 Emily Rodriguez， 我是 youth alliance for housing 的成员。我 23， 我在 16 年前就组织了 housing， 你知道为什么吗？ 因为我在 Williamsburg， Brooklyn， 我知道被 displacement 的感受， 我知道看到我的邻居被 displacement 的时候的感受， 我累了。我真的很生气， 我累了， 在这些地方， 但我 watched my neighborhood change drastically over the years， 我真的很生气。租金太高了， 而且已经很久了。走房协会有权力阻止几十年以前在 Williamsburg 发生的文化 genocide， 今天继续发生， 如你正在尝试今年的房租提高。如果我的家庭面临更多的房租提高， 我们会成为 another Dominican family displaced 从 Williamsburg， 这是我们知道的， 这是我知道的所有的。我值得留在我的街区。因为我看不到。我们现在更需要房租冻结。谢谢。
谢谢。Brandon Barrera, Audrey Lindsay, and Kenny Schaefer. Mr. Barrera.
首先，冻结房租。就是这样。你好，大家好， 我叫 Brandon， 我是 Party for Socialism and Liberation 的组织者， 我有个问题， 这里有没有谁 没有被房租提高所迷惑？ 食物和 groceries 的成本？ 这里有没有谁 而我们又再次， 年后， 在斗争中维持房租 affordable。以前，我们没有 elected 走房协会， 对吧？ 而我们正在斗争， 防止 2%，4%， 升到 8% 的增加， 在这些其他成本， 生活成本上升的同时。所以，当你 50 万在超市里买不到的东西， 可能你可以过几天。如果你有一个家庭， 我可以想象， 所以，我们在同时面临着这些问题， 我们必须存活， 我们必须应对 federal budget， 危胁着要让 millions of Americans 从社会项目中退出。我们有多少人不会通过 proposed budget？ 约40 亿美国人依靠 SNAP 利润， 而3 亿是 New York 省的。我们如何达成目标？ 而且我们还要谈论房租提高。所以，我们有过度 inflation， 生命危险的 cuts， 对，没错， 来吧， 我可能在星期日出生， 但我肯定不是上周的星期日出生。而我们得说， 因为这里， 他们有钱， 对吧？ 政府有钱把 20,000 个 ICE 人员派到街上， 捉捉， 捉捉人们。他们有钱叫军队， 叫起来支持邻居， 他们的社区。这确实存在， 那些钱在那里。他们有钱， 我们的钱， 对， 政府的钱， 为最 parasitic， 什么都不做的 millionaires 和 billionaires。因为，别误会， 这就是那些 tax cuts 的目的。所以， 我们也， 而现在， 现在我们看到， 有那个钱。有那个钱。别误会。让我们不要被骗， 冻结房租， 限制 billionaires， 这些 anti-social billionaires， 为我们值得的 dignified housing 赚钱。说不战。
你可以完成，先生。
而且，让我们为健康和教育捐款。我们需要一起战斗， 为了超越祈求 RGB 年后。而我们兄弟 Kwame Ture 的话， organize, organize, organize。
谢谢。Audrey Lindsay, followed by Kenny Schaefer, and Steve Morales. Ms. Lindsay.
你好，我叫 Audrey Lindsay。我是这个 full-time tenant union 的成员。我的房东是 full-time watermark， 一个大型的 landlord， 有 hundreds of buildings 在纽约市。具体来说，我是 Harlem 部分， 我代表 514和 516， West 135th Street， 那些 rent stabilized buildings。有 recurring ceiling leaks， 因为 plumbing system 是 non-functional。我们也有 multiple apartments with electrical fires， 因为 electrical system 被设计成一个 dangerous way。他们承认了这些问题， 但说他们不会做任何事。我们过去几年一直在付的钱。我们真的没有得到我们的钱。让我们冻结房租。
谢谢。Kenny Schaefer, followed by Stephen Morales, and Stella Rohn. Sir.
你好，我是 Kenny Schaefer， 我在这个街区的整个生命中都是公寓 rent stabilized tenant， 我是 Met Council Action 的成员， 我是它的 board 的 co-chair， 我在 Queens 的 New York 住宅律师协会 legal aid 社会 attorney。房子的 profit margins， industry-wide， 都是满腹的， 因为纽约市的房东们面临着租金 crisis， 不是 exacerbate， 如它已经 decade after decade。如果你没读 Rent Stabilization Law of 1969， 这个委员会是为了保护房东们 从“ oppressive rents” 甚至在 1969 年， 造成“ serious threats to public health, safety, and general welfare”。你不是为了提高房东的 profits， 为每年提高房租， 当所有人都知道房租已经太高了。而不是被 studies 和 marginally relevant numbers 的研究所迷惑， 这个委员会需要关注的只有 income and affordability studies， 书记们面对房东们面临的 crushing burden， 特别是 color 的社区， 和 income and expense studies， 书记们每年那个房东的 net operating income 通常在 35% 到 40% 每个房租 dollar 都流向房东的 bank account。现在是 39.1%。而 hundreds of thousands of families 需要无食物， 健康， 和其他需要来 subsidize 这个 swollen profit。这个满腹的 net operating income 是你要 focus on的， 在你做你的工作， 保护房东们从 oppressive rents。其余的只是噪音， 或 self-serving， 不允诺的 anecdotal stories， 从房东们不会打开文件。但你不需要为 millions of struggling households 要覆盖少数房东们需要经历的。不是 widely known， 但是 rent stabilization law， Section 26-511(c6a)， 任何房东打开文件， 但没有得到 fair net operating income， 可以得到 special hardship increase， 在你对所有人施加之后。但是，猜猜呢？ 在 statute， fair net operating income 定义为 5%。不是 39.1%。所以，别依赖 credit 了 trickle-down economics。公众议员们， 你有一个工作， 做它， 保护房东们， 回缩房租， 让 net operating income 为 10%。
谢谢。Stephen Morales, followed by Stella Rohn, and Red Young. Mr. Morales.
你好，我是 Stephen Morales， 我是 Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine。谢谢 Apple 和 Rent Guidelines Board 给我这个机会。现在，纽约市处于我们城市的最严重的 housing crisis。Homelessness 是 record high， eviction filings 是 nearly back to pre-pandemic levels， 而我们有 every borough 的 housing shortages， 使得房租 skyrocket。理由是 rental vacancy rate， 现在只有 1.4% 是1968 年以来最低的， 而在 Manhattan， median rent 是超过 $5,000 一个月。Low-income working， low-income working and middle-class families 都会拼命地生活和抚养家庭。为这个 crisis， 我们必须使用我们手中所有的工具， 增加住房供应和 affordability， 而且在同时保护房东们不受 displacement。这就是为什么我们需要继续建设更多住房， 包括 Manhattan和城市中的 low-income housing。这就是为什么我们必须确保面临 eviction 的房东们 有法律的保护， 对 New Yorkers living 在 nearly 1 million rent stabilized apartments across the city。我认为这个委员会正在考虑 1.75 到 4.75 增加， 在一年内 lease， 和两年 lease 增加， 主要是因为 rising cost for property owners。虽然这些 concern 要被考虑， Inflation 和 consumer price index 继续上升， 平均工资在 real terms 是 declining， 而房东们会花费更大的一部分收入用于房租。也是 true 的， 雷德曼 Manhattan 和城市里的 rent stabilized buildings 是在上升的， 而城市必须更支持这些大楼的 capital 和 operational needs， 为了保护我们 affordable housing stock， 不强迫房东们承受成本。我们知道 rent stabilized tenants 不能 afford rent increases。增加房租， 如这个委员会做过， 这三年里， 会 risk displacing them。我们城市的未来取决于解决 historic housing emergency， 保证房东们可以住在他们的家中。那意味着投票， 冻结房租， 这些 rent stabilized tenants 这一年。谢谢你有机会。
谢谢。Sheila Rohn, followed by Red Young, and Rosa Hakes. Oh, Kees, sorry. Please, Ms. Rohn.
我是 Washington Heights， The Met Council， 和 Housing Tenant Association， 和大多数房东。我同意你说的所有东西。好吧， 我是 retired teacher， 我70 年老。好吧， 所以，我想你能知道我大概有多少 pension。租金增加是进入， 谢谢。是， 谢谢。我知道我短。它是滴进我的 pension。It's dipping into my pension, and it's really messing with my Social Security. Now, how much more rent could I pay with a pension, a teacher's pension? And I'm not Tier One. And I must give credit to Michael Mulgrove, and I'm glad that he did not endorse a mayoral candidate until they start focusing on education. The problem with the rent increase, I think one person hit on it really, maybe several people. Landlords own too many buildings. That is your problem. They own too many buildings, they steal from Peter to pay Paul, they neglect buildings, and then they won't even help the tenants. If the tenants start a tenant association, they harass them. They harass them. Is that right? We don't have a right to our say about how we should live? This is the quality of our life. They are predatory thieves. When I came into my apartment, I had to pay five hundred dollars just for them to hold it. Okay? I didn't care if they held it or not, but I wanted an apartment, so I had to pay that. Okay? Now they want to charge us for air conditioners that we don't even use all year round. They want to charge us for pets. They want to charge us for lease. You split the lease last year. Why? That never happened in New York history. You split that lease. And when you did that, you sunk us. Now, I heard a landlord say, oh, well, we need the money to stay afloat. Well, we need the money to stay afloat. We need the, for you to roll it back so we can stay afloat, because you're sinking us. You are sinking New Yorkers. Many New Yorkers have left this city. I would have left, but I don't drive. That's the only, that's the only reason. I've lived here all my entire life, and I've been spoiled by the bus and train. That's the only reason. Plus, my medical. I would have to come back here for my medical. Is that fair? I've had two heart attacks, cancer, diabetes, and I'm seventy years old, mind you. How much more can they take from my pension and Social Security without me being homeless? Now, I'm a professional person, like many of you are. How do you feel? You, we are at your mercy, and you have the decision to make about our lives. You think about our lives. Think about it. These people are predatory thieves. Okay? And you allow them to own more than one building. Okay? And they can't even take care of them. So what should we do? Beg you? Because that's what we're doing. Okay? And a lot of us can't afford to move. We're stuck, and we're at your mercy, and we're begging you, begging you with every ounce of our being to look at our problem. And I have some homework for you, too. I'll leave it at the table so that you can analyze what I'm talking about. And a lottery system? We're not, we're not games. We're not people that want to be in a game. We're human. We're HI. We got human intelligence, not AI intelligence. I thank you for doing the job that you do, because it must be very difficult, you know, for you to go home and think about what everybody said. And I hope you do, because this is critical to all of us, to our children. Our children won't be able to live here, and if they do, then they're going to have to live with roommates. You know the dormitory model. That's part of the lottery system. Oh, I tried that. Right away, that's a discriminatory scam. So you tell me, and you tell the rest of these people, that they deserve better. We deserve better. We built this city. We built it, and they're tearing it down. Don't let them do this to us.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Red Young, followed by Rosa Hakese and Michael Davis. Please.
What's going on, everybody? People of New York. So I want to also ask for mercy. That is the first thing that I think is on my mind, and I think that's what everybody in here feels. Like, let's be realistic about it. We could shout at each other all we want, but what we really all know we want is goodness. Y'all don't want to be evil. I know it. We, we all, we all want something here that is just basic dignity, and y'all know it's okay to provide that. And look, we don't have to make enemies out of each other. We just have to understand each other. And something that I know y'all understand is that New York is about the people. I'm sure many of y'all are actual New Yorkers, you know? That's, that's a badge of honor right there. We're, we're real people, and the only reason we are that way is because we have a city to come from with other people and their cultures and their contributions. We contribute as New Yorkers. And if we're not here, how are we going to contribute to it? If we aren't allowed at the table whatsoever, we can't have a discussion. I mean, something like this is really healthy, but we need y'all to constantly hear. This is the top priority for maintaining dignity, humanity, goodness, New York, all of that stuff. It, this is the big thing. If we're not here, this is the last chance of, of all of this, and y'all know it. We're at the end. So there's only one right choice to make, and y'all know what it is. And that's why I ask for mercy on behalf of all of us here. Y'all know the right choice, and I'm confident you will make it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Rosa Hakese, Michael Davis, just one second, and Adam Blazig, please.
Bendiciones para todos.
Blessings to all.
Mi nombre es Rosa Hakese.
My name is Rosa Hakese.
Y represento la Washington Heights and Inwood.
And I represent the Washington Heights--
Washington Heights--
Washington Heights and Inwood area.
Soy presidenta de la Unidad Comunal de Nore Manhattan.
I am the president of the communal organization for northern Manhattan.
Y la presidenta de bloque Asociación de Seaman Avenue.
And I'm also the president for the Seaman Avenue Block Association.
Y la verdad es que me siento muy cansada--
And I have to say, I am exhausted--
--de venir todos los años aquí--
--to have to come here every single year--
--a testificar--
--to offer testimony.
Y le doy las gracias por escucharme.
And I thank you for listening to all of us.
Pero ojalá que ustedes no tengan la decisión tomada ya.
But I hope that you haven't already made your decision.
Y que escuchen nuestros testimonios.
And that you will please listen to our testimonies.
Yo no estoy en contra de los caseros.
I'm not against landlords.
Esa no es mi dinámica de vida.
That's not my MO of life.
Lo único que quiero es--
The only thing I want--
--que respeten las leyes--
For you to please respect the law.
--y respeten el servicio por el cual nosotros pagamos.
And also respect the service for which we all pay.
Que no es justo--
That it's not fair--
--que en el invierno--
That during the winter--
--con temperatura bajo cero--
With temperatures going below zero--
--no tengamos calefacción.
We don't have working heat.
Tampoco agua caliente.
Or hot water.
Que nuestros edificios--
And that our buildings--
--en el frente están llenos de basura.
Be littered with garbage, the front area of our building.
Porque no quieren limpiar.
Because no--
No quieren reparar.
No one wants to clean or repair.
Y si reparan--
And if they do repair--
--lo hacen de mala calidad.
They do a shoddy job.
Y vuelve el problema.
And the problem comes back once again.
Y pienso--
I also think--
--que la esclavitud no se ha volido.
That slavery hasn't--
Sinó que cambió de estatus.
However, it's just changed its status.
Porque creo que nosotros somos los nuevos esclavos--
Because I believe we're the new slaves--
--del presente inmediato.
In the, in the immediate present.
Y eso no es gracioso.
And that's not funny.
Porque nosotros trabajamos--
Because we work.
--para vivir una vida digna.
To live a dignified life.
Y de verdad amamos a Nueva York.
And we truly love New York City.
Que estamos viviendo aún en la ciudad más cara del mundo.
We're still living in the most--
Y estamos todavía aquí.
--expensive city in the world. And it's one of the most expensive cities, and we're still living here. We're still here.
Queremos reparaciones.
We want repairs.
Queremos dignidad en nuestros apartamentos.
We want dignity in our homes.
Queremos que nos respeten nuestros derechos.
We want our rights to be respected.
Que si, por ejemplo, yo tengo una, una renta frizada--
That if I have frozen rent--
--o controlada por la Corte--
Or controlled, or--
--es por una razón específica.
Controlled by the Court, there's a reason for that.
No están haciendo el trabajo los caseros.
And the landlords are still not doing their job.
Y ellos me mandan la renta como si yo tuviera debiendo una cosa que no respetan, la renta reducida.
They sent me, they send me a rent bill stating that I have not paid.
Y me hacen ver cada mes como una delincuente. Y yo soy una mujer retirada--
They make it seem like I'm a criminal, and I'm a retired person--
--hace ya unos años. Después de cuarenta años de trabajo.
For several years, after forty years of work.
Basta ya.
Please stop. Enough.
Tienen que limpiar el mojo.
You need to clean--
Tienen que limpiar los edificios.
The mold. You have to clean the buildings.
Tienen que hacer las reparaciones.
You have to make the repairs.
Y tienen que darnos calefacción en el invierno.
And you have to provide us with heat--
--y agua caliente.
And hot water in the winter.
No es justo--
It's not fair.
--que los calentadores de Nueva York exploten en los inviernos y hayan fuego.
That radiators explode in our apartments--
Porque alguien negligente no quiere dar calefacción.
Because someone negligent doesn't want to repair it. God bless you.
Gracias. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Michael Davis, followed by Adam Blazig and Jill Rappaport. Mr. Davis.
Hi. I don't know, I couldn't follow that. I'm a retiree, so I qualify to have a senior citizen rent increase exemption. I'm seventy years old. And, no--
Sir, can you reach up the mic a little bit so we can hear you better?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll bend down.
We don't want you to--
I'm too tall, anyway. Okay, thank you. Let's see, I've been retired for a couple of years. I'm seventy-two years old, and I've finally got a SCRI, Senior Citizen Rent Increase Exemption, and I would wish that for everybody. I always felt that the rent should be tied to the ability to pay, to income, but if that's not possible, then please try to persuade the powers that be in Albany to lower the age limit from sixty-two down to fifty. At least there will be more people allowed to qualify. Yeah. And the key to it? Tax abatement credits. I know you know what that means. Whatever shortfall, the government does not recoup from the taxes, find the money elsewhere. There's plenty of money from other sources than from renters. So apply that to a greater swath of people, and you will not have this uproar every year or every two years or three. Thank you very much for your time and--
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Adam, Adam Blazig, followed by Jill Rappaport and Jose Cabrera.
Hi, good evening. My name is Adam Blazey, and I'm here to advocate for a rent freeze. I think that's the bare minimum. For the past three years, I have been organizing with other tenants in upper Manhattan for, against disrepair and displacement and conditions that just make our homes feel as though they are not a homes due to harassment and tactics by Sugar Hill Capital Partners. This is a landlord that we all share in common across our buildings. Sugar Hill Capital Partners is the corporate landlord that owns rent-stabilized buildings across the city. They own at least fifty in upper Manhattan alone. And in 2021 and 2022, executives with Sugar Hill Capital were named number one and number seven worst landlords in the city, respectively. And in 2023, it was reported that some of, that Sugar Hill Capital, the landlord, had stopped paying the mortgages on several of their buildings, and they had begun to go into foreclosure. We had found, looking at data from their mortgage provider, Freddie Mac, that provides mortgage for thirty-five or forty of their buildings in Harlem, that they had, in fact, stopped paying mortgages on all of these buildings going back to 2022. They're still not paying their mortgages. And so I think this raises a question. Why are we being asked to pay any money at all, let alone a rent increase, when they're not repairing our ceilings, not fixing our elevators, not fixing the windows, and not even paying their mortgages? Of course, there's the excuse that, you know, the, the 2019 rent laws and costs of, of operating the buildings are just too much to bear for them to recoup the cost to put back into the building, but we know that that's a lie. One, from your own reporting, they have like twelve percent increase in their net operating income. Comptroller's office said, even with adjusting for inflation, that number is still eight percent. And at least just focusing on our own landlord, we know that since 2022, they've continued to make real estate investments. In 2022, 2023, and 2024, they invested tens of millions of dollars to buy land in Greenwich Village. They bought land in a bill, apartment complex in Atlanta for tens of millions of dollars. They helped finance a luxury condo in Boston for eighty-plus million dollars. So they've been doing that just the last two, three years while they're saying, don't have money to fix all these things in these people's buildings. We know what's going on. What's going on is that landlords are waging a capital strike against tenants. They're withholding apartments, demanding more and more for, for rent increases, all because they're upset that the law has changed in 2019 and messed with their business models, quote unquote. So again, I think rent freeze is the bare minimum, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jill Rappaport, Jose Cabrera, and Jay Paula. I just want to remind everybody that if you want to speak, we encourage you to do so, but you must sign up. Sign up will be open until eight P.M.
Les queremos recordar que si desean declarar, que por favor lo hagan antes de las ocho, que por favor se apunten. Les animamos a que lo hagan, pero tienen que apuntarse a la mesa de inscripción que se encuentra en la parte trasera de esta sala, porque después de las ocho no podrán apuntarse. Muchas gracias.
Please.
Hi, I'm glad to be testifying before the board. I've done it a number of times since moving out of a rent-stabilized situation into Penn South, a limited equity co-op downtown, where I am not hounded by abusive landlords and predatory rents. People complain about the homelessness on the streets of New York. There would not be an unbelievable number of homeless had it not been for absolutely inflationary rents, which are tolerated and should not be. We have a new problem, which is a thing called Donald J. Trump, which is going to increase people's financial insecurity and, you know, make hits on their medical and educational and every other kind of American so-called freedom. So we should be preparing for that eventuality, because it is going to make the rent crisis far more, far more difficult for people. And as several people, many people have pointed out, open the books of landlords, and let's see how high their profits are. And if they can't afford to maintain their buildings, maybe they should get in another line of work, like something else. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Jose Cabrera, Jay Paula, the initial J, and A.K. Kevin.
Members of the board, workers won't be priced out. And let me make it plain to the Rent Guidelines Board, while you sit up here playing numbers games, real people are being buried alive. You talk about balance, but there is no balance. When landlords swim in profits while working people drown in rent. Let's look at the facts. Cold, hard, and indisputable. Landlord profits are up twelve point one percent while tenant wages fell. Eighty-four percent of us are rent burden. Half our paychecks stolen by greed, that greed that you protect. Evictions skyrocketing. Families thrown into the streets like trash. And you call this fair? It's not fair. This is economic violence. They tell us to beg politely for relief while the Rent Guidelines Board rubber stamps are destruction. Well, I say we reject your rigid system when workers can't live in the city we build, when seniors-- when seniors are taxed out of homes they've had for 40 years. That's not policy, that's theft, that's crime. See, here's the question, whose side are you on? Because we know what side we're on. The side, you are on the side of Wall Street landlords, but you're not on the side of nurses, cab drivers, dishwashers, the people who keep this city moving, the people who keep this city alive, the people who built this city. So you're on the side of the loopholes and lies. We want rent rollbacks, not hikes. We won't wait for crumbs from your table. We'll fight by any means necessary in these hearings, in these streets, in our communities until you freeze the rent and stop this legalized looting. The time for excuses is over. Freeze the rent now. Power to the people. Free Palestine.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Jay Paula, A.K. Kavan, and Erica Overton. Please.
To begin, I want to make this note. I do not establish a difference between you humans there or these humans here or anywhere in the world. We're all humans. We're playing the game of civilization, but we need to understand what that construct is in the covenant that we've made before. My speech is this one. I believe in love above all and will speak from there, especially as a father. As each of you and every human of our own speeches, I was born on this earth and from this earth. As a citizen of this earth, I have the intrinsic right to live and nourish from it. No one owns the earth, we all belong to it. If we shall speak in terms of the construct of ownership, if that be the only language understood in this forum, then we are all shareholders of this earth and no one has more rights than another. The construct of a deed of ownership and of money itself, both ink on paper, are all upheld by the fundamental social covenant of the collective civilization organized for the greatest good of all. The moment an owner or management breaks their duty and obligation to upkeep a building structure in all its maintenance needs for which we, the people, compensate through the rent you impose, it invalidates the very deed of ownership we all agreed to uphold in this game called civilization, sustained only by everyone playing a fair game and fulfilling their duty. As a professional of building design, architecture, and the construction industry, I serve this city in projects as the World Trade Center, JFK, LGA, Newark, AC Schools, the Federal Jail, and MTA train stations, just to name a few. All infrastructures that serve society for everyone's progress. I am an insider and I know exactly how everything is run, what buildings cost, everything. Yet, as a tenant with my own family and six-year-old daughter, I am forced to live fearing for our own life's safety because the landlord won't maintain a building's structural problems. Landlords ask for higher rents and more money each year in order to allegedly have enough to keep the buildings, yet they only cosmetically conceal the problems and keep everyone's rents for profit. You need to be clear and aware that your actions may endorse the corruption and fraud that has been going on for decades. We've all had enough. Each will be held accountable for every building collapse and lives lost moving forward. If we don't put an end to the monopoly game with everyone's homes, my building moves every day, we have to hammer back the nails, we get entrapment, we get so many conditions that I don't have time here to explain because of this oppressive club that you have there with two minutes, when this, when this auditorium is almost empty. If you've listened to every person speaking here, their blood races because of this. It's a way that you oppress all of us, causing extra stress. I'm going to continue to finish this page. We've all had enough.
Please finish, sir.
Of, each will be held, okay. Buildings are rotting inside while looking pretty at surface. Collapses are going to increase if you continue to endorse the fraud. I'm not here for a rent increase, nor want a rent freeze. I demand a rent rollback. And the fulfillment, and the fulfillment of landlord obligations to fix problems at source and upkeep every structural aspects of every building they have allowed to rot for decades while we paid. Building maintenance costs have been paid for, have been paid for already, yet buildings remain in ever-greatest advance towards collapse. Where did the money go? If you pretend to force we, the people, to hire rents, what we leave terrified in unstable buildings like my building is a violation. Per negligence for profits, you may be acting as part, as part of a ring of terrorists against Americans and our families in our own homeland. That must end. Americans do not negotiate with terrorists.
You could finish, sir, please.
We need to choose between terrorism or patriotism. Rent reduction and landlord accountability, that is currently your duty. You break the fundamental social covenant for the current reality beyond the real estate financial construct. Rent decrease is in order. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. A.K. Kavan.
Yeah, A.K., can you hear me?
Followed by, one second, so let me just, Erica Overton and Lee Hamilton. I'm sorry, please proceed.
Okay, A.K. here, this is about an illegal lockout, a landlord illegal lockout. I'm 80 years old, I'm on the streets, I'm in the shelter. I need press and I need a lawyer. The courts are a farce. It takes five months to get in front of a judge. They're underfunded, they're overcrowded, and it's a joke. My email, ashwoodart@gmail, Ashwood Art, A-S-H-W-O-O-D, Art, A-R-T. I need help, I need a press. Folks, we're hanging on by our fingernails out here. We're hanging on by our fingernails. I saw a guy in the street in front of Bloomingdale's tonight, he has cancer, he's sleeping on the streets. We need the SROs back. The SROs were great. If we did those, we did two years ago for all the people from out of the country, we can do them for 160,000 around the streets, single occupancies. The landlords don't want, they want, you know, they don't want it because it takes the pressure off of the rents. So, I mean, we, we're together, you know, we can elect the next mayor if we get together, but it's divide and conquer. So I'm here to tell you that I need help. I'm 80 years old, 80 years old and I'm on the streets because my landlord has locked me out. I need a lawyer, I need money, it's $5,000, $10,000 for a lawyer to get in front of the right judge in court. So that's where I'm at. And ashwoodart@gmail is my story, I need to tell my story. I, I'm in trouble, this is crazy, this is crazy, your system. By the way, thank you for being here for us tonight, even those who are not on our side, thank you for coming out tonight because we need help and our country's going down the drain, you know, we're losing the middle class, we're becoming a third world nation, we're becoming a third world nation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Erica Overton, followed by Lee Hamilton and Delinsa Glover. I'm sorry, please.
Hi, my name is Erica Overton, I'm the chief of staff to New York State Assembly member Linda B. Rosendahl, Chair of the New York State Assembly Committee on Housing. She is currently in session, so I am here today. But reading parts of her testimony, "The RGB cannot afford to treat this year's vote like business as usual. This moment in history demands that we do everything possible to proactively protect people from an unforgiving federal government that is waging war on low-income people and New Yorkers in particular. Congressional Republicans' current bill, the one big beautiful, the one big beautiful act, Bill Act, will decimate New York State's social safety net. Under Oba, 1.5 million New Yorkers would lose access to Medicaid and close to 1 million people, including 363,000 children, stand to lose food benefits." It's not hyperbole to say that these changes are catastrophic. According to the RGB's own data, 21% of rent stabilized tenants are food insecure, with 8% of rent stabilized tenants identifying as very food insecure. Oba will only exacerbate the crisis. What's more, the number of people applying for cash assistance increased by a staggering 38% from 2022 to 2023. One-Shot Deals, a grant administered by the New York City Human Resources Administration that helps people pay their rental arrears, increased by 59.4%, while the RGB states that the 108,000 One-Shot Cases that were approved by the city are equal to the number of grants approved in the seven years preceding the pandemic. Those statistics are still alarming. As the federal government makes it harder for people to feed themselves or pay for medical care, more New Yorkers will undoubtedly fall behind in their rent to keep pace with other pressing expenses, especially if this board approves another increase. As more people go hungry and fall behind on rent, it should not be surprising that evictions are increasing against rent stabilized tenants. According to the RGB's own data, approximately 56% of evictions in 2023 were against rent stabilized tenants. 65% of rent-regulated households facing eviction lived in the Bronx and in Brooklyn, 59% in Manhattan. Last, but certainly not least, President Trump unveiled a budget containing a historic 44% funding cut to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. It would also zero out funding for tenant and project-based rental assistance as well as funding for public housing authorities. While I'm proud that my bill, the Housing Access Voucher Program, was passed as part of the 2025-2026 New York State budget, we, it won't be enough if we lose federal Section 8 vouchers and if Mayor Adams continues to impose unnecessarily strict guidelines on city FEPs recipients. It will become increasingly difficult for New Yorkers to claw their way out of shelter once they are evicted. Oba abandoned low-income New Yorkers by further upending an unequal playing field. Thus, this board must recognize this moment. We cannot saddle hard-working New Yorkers with a rent increase when they have no idea where their next meal is coming from or how they're going to keep the lights on or if they'll be able to continue their cancer treatment. This board has an opportunity to champion true affordability and to protect people from the inevitable at the federal level. Keeping money in people's pockets could make all the difference once Oba is passed. Again, we do not have to aid and abet Donald Trump's war on New York's social safety net by imposing rent hikes on those who can least afford it. In fact, history and current conditions beg us not. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Hamilton, followed by Delcinea Glover. Oh, Delcinea left, okay. Josefina Ventura. Lee Hamilton? No, no? I saw some of them, no, no, no. Okay, if, if, if Lee Hamilton comes, let us know, certainly let him speak. Josefina Ventura, followed by Tiffany Lee and Janine Dubnow.
Good evening. My name is, I am Josefina Ventura, Co-Chair of Riverside Neighborhood Association in Washington Heights. Actually, we are having an extremely difficult economic situation due to the fact that income has not risen up at the same level as the rent in New York City. We are experiencing salary or time reductions in our jobs. Average wages in real terms are declining and tenants are spending larger portions of their income in rent. Rent stabilized tenants cannot afford more increases. If this board approved the proposed percentages, there will be no units in which we can be alternately housed. It only will create displacement throughout the entire city. Many low-income renters have fallen, have had fallen paying their rent, taken to civil court by their landlords, ending up losing their homes, while others have to make more difficult trade-offs between rent, food, medical care, transit fare, and other necessities. Even single mothers have to spend money in their children's school supplies. What about senior citizens who have a fixed income? They barely can meet their end needs. A rent freeze can be done, a rent freeze can be done, why not? If former Mayor de Blasio did three times. Landlords had a 12% increase in operating income in rent stabilized buildings last year. Increasing our rent will add more homelessness to the actual housing crisis we are experiencing. We are struggling to keep up with this inflation. On top of that, we are rent-burdened. I urge the board to freeze the rent for a stabilized apartment this upcoming year. We need a rent rollback. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Lee, Janine Dubnow, and Linda Smith, please.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Lee and I'm the Executive Director of Alta Gracia Faith and Justice Works, a community-based nonprofit in northern Manhattan dedicated to putting faith into action, promoting social justice, affordable housing being one of the top issues we are concerned about. Many of our parishioners and neighbors we work with are longtime rent stabilized tenants in one of the city's largest concentrations of rent-regulated housing. I represent many rent stabilized tenants and I am also a former rent stabilized tenant myself and a current tenant. I lived in a rent stabilized apartment from 2014 to 2020, during which time I started with a preferential rent, which increased each year about 10% until it reached the legal rent. During part of that time, I was also working two jobs, both in my nonprofit work and as a high school teacher. Although I didn't see the immediate benefits of the RGB's historic rent freezes during that time due to my preferential rent increases, I'm grateful to the RGB for those freezes that capped the legal rent from increasing once the preferential rent reached that legal rent threshold. After leaving my rent stabilized apartment due to numerous issues with my landlord, I moved to a small, non-rent stabilized apartment building and I'm now rent-burdened and in an insecure housing situation, living month to month without a lease since the landlord wants to sell the building. So while your decision tonight, or this season, will not impact my current immediate situation, I appreciate all the more the importance of rent stabilization and I speak out now for our neighbors and our community members who rely on these affordable homes and the protections of rent stabilization. I echo that the cost of living for working people is unmanageable and many of these neighbors have fixed incomes and are facing threats to other social programs and cannot afford any increases in rent, let alone the increases the board is proposing. In the current political climate, rights of tenants, low-income workers, immigrants, and other vulnerable groups are being eroded, dismantled, and attacked. New York City strives to be a welcoming, diverse bastion of opportunity for all. Affordable housing is key to that vision. At this pivotal moment, every act, every vote, every decision counts. The RGB has a unique opportunity to send a message across this city and for all those watching from beyond to say we value working-class tenants, those struggling with inflated rents, rising cost of living, stagnant wages, those who contribute so much to our city and also deserve to live in dignity. Vote for a rent freeze to send a message to protect affordable housing in New York City and ensure that New York will remain a place for all. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Janine Dubnow, Linda Smith, and Rachel Ann Younger, please.
Hi, my name is Janine Dubnow and I'm from organization RENA, Riverside Edgecombe Neighborhood Association in Washington Heights. So I want to speak to you, the Rent Guidelines Board. I'm not talking about the tenant members, I'm talking about the landlord and the public members. You and the public, the landlord members and the public members, you are doing the work of Donald Trump. Do you support Donald Trump? Do you? Did you vote for him? That's his work, that's the work. What's the work? Take from the poor and give to the rich. That's what you are doing. This big, beautiful bill of Donald Trump is removing food stamps This big, beautiful bill of Donald Trump is removing food stamps, Section 8 support for housing, and a lot of other people have already mentioned many programs that low-income people need. This is going to make it even harder for people to pay their rent. And now you're raising the rents. You're raising the rents. You've decided to raise the rents. You've already made a decision. We don't know exactly how much, but you have decided to raise the rents. So do you believe that housing is a human right? Do you? Do you believe that tenants should make a choice between food and housing or medicine and housing? How much do you pay for your rent? Do you pay more than 30% of your income for rent? That's what I want to ask the public members. Do you? Think about that. Do you ever think about food or rent? Do you? No, you do not, I'm sure. How can you live with yourselves when you cause such suffering? How can you? Do you go to church? Do you go to synagogue? Do you go to mosque? How do you feel? Landlords are making a 12% profit. You know it. We all know it. Everybody has already mentioned that. And yet, you still have decided to raise rents on the poorest people in New York. Oh, because the cost of housing is so high. Yeah, but the profits are still high. The profits are even higher. So all you care about is the landlords. And I'm talking about the public members, not just the landlords. So in March 2025, over 110,000 people slept in New York City shelters each night, 70% of them being members of homeless families, including 37,870 children. Did you think of that? Did you? Homelessness grew by 53.1% from January 2023 to January 2024, and I don't know what it is now, more than four times the rest of the nation, because of you. Because of you. Northern Manhattan has the highest concentration of rent-stabilized apartments in New York, and also a high concentration of immigrants. Now, a mayoral candidate, Brad Lander, was arrested by ICE today. What is going on in our country? By raising rents, you are attacking immigrants, doing Trump's work. That's what you're doing. Did you vote for Trump? But you're doing his work. We say no rent hikes, no deportations. Landlords plus ICE is displacement. Deportation is displacement. No one is illegal in our city. Rent freeze now.
Thank you. Linda Smith, Rachel Younger, and then Matt 30, Theory.
Mark.
Oh, Martin. I'm sorry. It says Mark. I'm sorry.
So I'm Linda Smith. I live in Washington Heights, just as Janie was talking about. I am in a rent-stabilized building. I've been there for about 20 years. I'm a teacher in the South Bronx. I work with, as another teacher had said, I'm a single income. I'm living paycheck to paycheck, literally. Just like many other teachers, I get up at 5:00, I get to work by 7:00. Our school goes till 4:00. I work after school, do aftercare. I get home, because it takes an hour, 6:30 to 7:00 sometimes. That's hours of a hedge funder, but I don't have the salary of a hedge funder. That's a problem, because when we tell people who, I mean, to really make it, you've got to be making over $250,000 in New York City. You have to. We know this. So how are people that are serving the majority here, hygienists, you know, paraeducators, teachers? How, and we're serving children, your children, we're serving maybe grandchildren, and how is that? And food, it's just, it doesn't pay. It's so expensive at this point, and our parents, many of our parents, work their asses off, and they've got, some of them, two jobs. I mean, you know the median income in Hunts Point's like $30,000. And some of them drop their kids off at 7:30 a.m. and pick them up at 6:00 p.m., not because they want to, because they have to. And they're serving the communities, the progressive communities in the Upper West Side, the Upper East Side, Park Slope. They're serving them, and we know this, right? We know this. And but yet, they're hardly paying the bills, paycheck to paycheck. And you heard all of these testimonies. The reality is, you voted already. You decided already, and that's the heartbreaking thing. I heard about this meeting, and I was like, I'll just come. Not that I have any voice or anything, but I'm a working-class Joe like everybody else. And it's just really hard when rent is like the highest it has ever been in New York City, ever been. And like, what is going on? You're hearing these stories. I mean, my mother was an immigrant. She literally worked herself to death, 73 years old, literally on her deathbed, working, because she had to keep working. And it's like, when does it ever get better for the next generation? And again, my parents, the kids at our schools, they work so damn hard. When is it enough? When is enough enough? And I'm just, I can't say encourage you, because you decided already, but I'm encouraging everybody in this room, we got to just galvanize. We got to keep going. They tried earlier. We got to get the word out, because it's already done here, but we got to get going. And I'm not going to waste any more time, but I'm blown away by the testimonies I heard. It's my first time here, and I'm so sorry for what you're going through. I'm so sorry. And I just want you to know, like, you just keep working hard, because we want better for our kids, right? So thank you. Thank you for your time.
Rachel Ann Younger.
Yes, hi, that's me. Thank you.
Let me just, Mark Theory and Maria Brown. Just want to remind everybody, it's almost 7:30, 7:28. We'll stay for as many speakers who want to speak, but we ask that you sign up by 8:00 p.m. So you have another half hour to sign up if you'd like.
Solo le quiero recordar, señores, que son casi las 7:30, 7:28 por ahí. Entonces, nos quedaremos todo el tiempo que se requiere si ustedes quieren hablar. Pero si quieren hablar, por favor, inscríbanse en la mesa de atrás. Muchas gracias. Tienen hasta las 8 de la noche para hacerlo. Gracias.
Sorry, ma'am, please.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Rachel Ann Younger. I'm a rent-stabilized tenant in the apartment my parents moved into in 1966. My mother, speaking of mothers, I'm sure is rolling in her grave right now. The rents are rising faster than wages for most people, and in my case, in my industry, as with many other people in other industries, the combination of advancement of technology in industries, corporate monopolizations of those industries, and I've recently found myself competing in a market for a job against people in other countries living at a cost of living that's a fraction of what we have here. And after skyrocketing increases already, where did that money go? They had money to spend on lobbying, but not on repairs for the apartment that I lived in with my 90-something-year-old World War II veteran with health issues for whom I was a caregiver. When they got that money, did they care? Did they care about these things? Here are some of the things that they haven't done. Power is not up to code. Power not functioning in certain areas of the apartment. Improperly functioning stove/oven, even according to the new super. The last one was removed for harassment, thankfully, dealing with less of that now. And thankfully, my father is passed and doesn't have to anymore. Cracked ceiling with layers going back, including lead paint, over my bed, mold, broken window blinds, and a broken floor piece that was right by where my dad slept. There was a tripping hazard, and he had Parkinson's. And guess what? When he died, and I was going through some old photos, he told me that they refused to repair it years before. I found an Ectochrome slide from 1974, photos of that same thing. Did they replace it? Did they fix it? No. Did they care? Did they care that every, did they care in giving an HVAC unit system with my father's CPOD or myself with my exposure to World Trade Center after volunteering after 9/11? Would they do that? Each of you, as Rent Guidelines Board members, have the fate of New Yorkers in your hands. This is not only about individuals and the trauma and stress, which will have and has had, if you haven't noticed, repercussions on the energy that we pass to one another when we're in tight quarters together and what should be a community supporting each other. That's what made this city great, was us coming together as a community, not us as a pig bank lining the pockets of shareholders in real estate. I need a rent rollback. Tenants need a rent rollback. New York needs a rent rollback. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Theory.
Theory.
Theory. Sorry. Please.
Hello. My name is Mark Theory. I've been fortunate to connect with Housing Conservation Coordinators and the West Side Neighborhood Alliance, but I can speak firsthand about the landlord and owner in my building leaving the building in disrepair to pressure tenants to move out of their own accord so that the landlord could do reconstruction of my entire building while I lived in the building alone as the only rent-stabilized tenant remaining for more than four years, while I had to listen to drilling and buzzsaws and hammering and everything else so that they could do superficial renovations, some of which were done illegally and without permits, and deregulate some, and increase the rents of all of the other apartments in my building by $1,000 to $2,000 each. During that time, workers, management, the super, and the landlord herself regularly harassed me in ways like trying to break in, make me feel unsafe, endangering my health, and double-talking me as if I wasn't smart enough to recognize their assumption that I wouldn't understand my rights and push back. I learned my rights, documented everything, got DOB, HPD, DOH, and Con Ed to come many times, and eventually settled an eviction case significantly in my favor. But most tenants don't know enough and aren't supported enough to be brave and fight back against housing injustices. The owner of my building basically just finally brought the apartments and building up to code after way too many years, barely, just to eventually sell it to a group of owners equally interested in maintaining the building to code without significant pressure from tenants to do so, and even then, with multiple unnecessary and purposeful delay tactics, employed to try and exhaust the will of tenants to demand required services and improvements. Landlords are making more than enough additional income because of shady business practices like I've experienced, and they have hidden themselves behind LLCs to protect themselves from being held accountable for the condition of their properties. More so, they claim that they don't have the money to upkeep their buildings if they don't increase their rent, but there are pools of funding resources available to them if they wish to make necessary repairs and truly do not have the financing available. All they have to do is open their books and demonstrate their need. Why don't they want to demonstrate their need by opening their books? Well, I think it's pretty plain to see that the reason is because their books show that they do not need the additional income in order to maintain their properties. They just want to gouge tenants, and that's not fair. Freezing the rent or reducing tenant rent for rent-regulated and currently unregulated or deregulated apartments as well, if we're being real about affordability in this city, is the right thing to do. That is unquestionable. I implore you to vote for either freezing or reducing the rent, but if you insist on raising the rent, please only vote on increasing the rent, the minimum reasonable amounts. Please be considerate of the facts in this year's 2025 Income and Expense Study and provide dignity and fairness to tenant residents of NYC who are struggling to continue to exist in a city that continually makes it more difficult for real, everyday New Yorkers to maintain a presence and a community here that makes NYC the place people want to live and visit. De Blasio did it for three years. You can do it too, based on the legitimate merits. Please be logical, reasonable, and merciful public servants. Thank you.
Thank you. Mariah Brown. Mariah Brown. Okay, if she comes back, please let us know. I believe Councilwoman Gail Brewer is here.
Thank you, Ms. Apple.
Nice to see you, Councilwoman.
I have copies if you want them. I'm Gail Brewer, and I am the City Councilmember for the Upper West Side, and I very much appreciate you holding this hearing at this location on the Upper West Side. I want to thank the members of the Rent Guidelines Board and certainly Chair Doug Apple. I think you know it's your responsibility to ensure that every New York City person can afford rent. However, members of the RGB are tasked with analyzing the history of the market conditions and, I think, determining what keeps owners whole and protects tenants from undue rent burdens. As you know, just like every other elected official, we have calls, emails, so many residents who are experiencing housing insecurity and need help from the government. We have a monthly housing clinic with attorneys, but the demand far exceeds what we can provide. I'd love to see more screedree recipients get a higher eligibility, but I believe that the legislation in Albany that would do that did not pass the Assembly, only the Senate, so it's not going to happen this year. In voting to adopt guidelines of 1.75 to 4.75 for one-year lease and 3.75 to 7.75 for two-year, I think you are contemplating increases that are well beyond reason, and I'm asking you to reconsider this decision and to vote for a rent freeze. I also urge the board to vote 0% as you have in the past for SRO and lodging house tenants. They're incredibly vulnerable. The City of Yes passed. I voted for it in the City Council, and it would help, but it is the future. People need relief today. I think in Manhattan, the median rent is $4,500 as of April 25. It's very, very high. It's unaffordable, and of course, those at lower incomes are being forced out. Believe it or not, households with children, 112% more likely to leave New York City than households without children. Great schools, we want them to stay here. We know that City Hall and others are critical of districts like mine for not developing affordable units. We'd love to have them. They keep building shelters and not affordable units. Meanwhile, the overall vacancy in New York is 1.41%, and the vacancy rate for affordable apartments is even smaller. And of course, rents in New York City are rising as much as seven times faster than wages. We all want tenants to be able to afford rent and remain in their apartment. Evictions are not higher than, during, and after the pandemic, but only 50% of those going to housing court get an attorney despite the law. I also want to just mention quickly, those who are small property owners, I've heard from them, they need help, particularly if you have 100% rent regulated in your small building. Then I know you have utility rates and DEP charges and insurance all going up. Water bill goes up. Property taxes go up. We should think of something for them, because they have seen a 21.7% increase in operating costs since 2019, putting a strain on these rent-stabilized buildings. I believe that the Price Index of Operating Cost, PIOC, calculations shows a 6.3% increase in operating costs. I get it. We have to make sure that we take care of the small owners, too. The majority of owners in this city have some options. They may not be in such dire need of the additional income and should, that would be gained from the proposed rent increases. Maybe they can take out loans, financing from HPD, file for hardship with HCR, have reserves. And as a report that their board stated, the net operating income for rent-stabilized landlords increased by roughly 12% across the city, 2% increase from last year. But the real matter to me is protect the financial security of our most vulnerable citizens. Those who pay more than they can afford do not have options. They can't find a less expensive apartment. They can't double-dip with a bad option with their friends, and food and health care, they can't cut it in order to make the rent. Thank you to the board for your dedication and thoughtful consideration. Please freeze the rent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilwoman, for all your service. Xavier Rodriguez, Ali Perez, and Ray Dietz.
How are you doing today? My name is Xavier Rodriguez. I'm with RENA. I'm from 442 West 106th Street between Amsterdam and San Nicholas. And the reason I said my full address is because we are currently fighting our landlord, who is JSAF, JSAF Management, in case y'all know it, and probably do, one of the worst management in the city, 100% look them up. JSAF last year took over our building for thinking that we were going to be be good, happy, they're going to fix everything. We're going to have elevator, we're going to have AC, we're going to have heat, right? Wrong. For the past, last year of 2024, the winter, spring, and summer, we were going through hell with this management. Hell, not only that, but the rent was increasingly high for everybody in that building, and they did not fix a single thing. We had tenants, our neighbors, in their apartments, their ceiling collapsing on them. And what would they do? They would hire some regular schmo from the street, act like he's our super, and act to duct tape it, fix it up, and put a patch over it, thinking that it's fixing it. Then the next month, boom, same thing happens again. Yes. So what we did, me and my friend, we got tired. We were exhausted, right? We're young, we're hungry. We know what we want. We live in New York City. We come with the shits. Sorry for cursing. Yeah, so what we did was, we had Guillermo and Gina hook us up with Manhattan Legal Services, amazing legal services if anybody needs them. I recommend it 100%. So what we did was, we stepped up. We have our tenant association. I am the president of Lieutenant Counsel for 442 West Apartment 6C. That is me. So what we did was, we got the whole entire building, not just one floor, not just two, the whole entire building to hold their rent. For how many months? For six months straight. Six months straight. Because why? Because we were tired of the shits. We put our foot down. We planted ourselves. We're not playing this game with that anymore, man. We tired of it. Got rid of our rent. Y'all treating us like crap. We're not sticking with it. So what we did was, they saw a bunch of young, hungry kids looking to fight, and they stuck with us. And what happened now? As of this month, as of June, those six months that we held our rent, we no longer have to pay it. As of this month of June, we are starting off clean off the slate. And that's what happens. We have determination and persistence because we do not fuck around, and we are young and hungry. Do not play with us because we're here to stay. And we're here to stay. And I remember, and I will never forget this moment, the director from JSAF, we were making such an impact on their company, the director from JSAF came to our building. And I will never forget this moment. He came to the roof, and I remember, he turned around. I looked at him, and I said, yo, I'm coming for your building. He turned around, he laughed at me, and I shook his hand. I said, I'm coming for your building. And as of today, I came from his building. And as of today, they're fixing every single apartment in that building. This is for everybody in here. Step up, get in the tenant association. Stop being treated like crap because y'all don't deserve that. Y'all deserve more than that. Put your foot down because enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Ali Perez?
Good evening, everyone. I just came from outside. I wanted to make a conference call. I just got in. I think there are Spanish-speaking people in here that I know that I would like to express myself in Spanish. I have a translator at this point. You know, esta noche es una noche muy importante.
This evening is a very important evening.
Es muy importante para todos los que estamos acá.
It's very important for everyone that's here.
Y todos los que han tenido que irse.
And for all the people that had to leave.
Yo vengo directamente de mi trabajo para acá y sé que muchos más lo han hecho igual que yo.
I'm coming straight from work, and I'm pretty sure a lot of other people did the same thing.
Porque esto se trata de los valores humanos que a nosotros nos corresponden.
Because this has to do with human value that belongs to all of us. It's everyone's responsibility.
Lamentablemente, la política o la politiquería del día de hoy, hoy en día, está acabando con el amor de la gente, está acabando con la paz, está acabando con los valores familiares, está acabando con eso, esa paz que necesitamos para subsistir. Tenemos...
Unfortunately, politics of today is actually ending or is on the verge of ending. Love for each other, peace that we should have, family values, and just the peace that we should share with everyone, with our neighbor.
Es una vergüenza como activista comunitario que soy, es una vergüenza ir a visitar algunos inquilinos envejecientes ya retirados como escuché en esta noche acá, que hoy en día están padeciendo en los apartamentos, que da pena entrar a uno de sus apartamentos, que desde el baño de uno de esos envejecientes usted puede ver el baño de abajo.
Unfortunately, it's such a shame that for me as a community activist, it's such a shame for me to visit a tenant who is elderly, who is retired, and listen to them like I've listened to many that were here today and see that this person is suffering inside their apartment where their bathroom is in such shambles that you can see the bathroom above it or below it.
Que tienen una bañera que le da por la rodilla de alto, y ya la edad que tienen es imposible, es difícil levantar un pie para poder entrarse a la bañera, darse un baño.
And their tubs, their bathtubs are so high that it's impossible for someone of such an advanced age to lift their leg up in order for them to get into the tub to take a shower.
Me han enseñado bolsos así de cartas que le han llevado al landlord, certified mails que han enviado al landlord pidiéndole que le cambien esa bañera, que le arreglen el piso del baño, que le arreglen el radiador de la cocina o del dormitorio. Oiganme, y eso han pasado 10, 12, 15 años y no le han hecho caso a esa situación.
They've also shown me bags like this size full of letters, certified letters or letters sent certified mail that they have sent to their landlords, asking them to change the bathtub or to fix the floor or to fix the radiators that are in the kitchen, in the bedrooms. And it's been 10, 12, 15 years, and no one has paid any attention to them.
Y lo lamentable de todo esto es que mirando los récords de DHCR, mirando los récords de HPD, mirando la información que tenemos públicamente acerca de tantos landlords y responsables, cada uno de ustedes en esa mesa conocen la realidad de este asunto.
And the sad thing is that even after reading and reviewing the DHCR records, the HPD records, and all the public information that we can all read, and it's just to have these slum lords that list all these slum lords, I'm pretty sure that each and every one of you at this table over here knows who we're talking about.
Son propietarios de edificios criminales. Son propietarios de edificios que deben de estar sirviendo tiempo en la cárcel desde hace muchos años, y ninguno le han puesto atención. Más sin embargo, quieren premiarlo con un aumento de renta.
They're criminal landlords. They're criminal individuals who actually should be serving time. They should be doing a bid and should have been in prison years ago. And instead of paying attention, what we're doing is just giving them more profit and giving them more wealth.
A este momento, tenemos que arrodillarnos ante ustedes.
Right now, we have to kneel before you.
Tenemos que rogarles como si fueran santos.
We have to beg you like if you are saints.
Para que ustedes entiendan la necesidad imperante que exige este pueblo para que fricen la renta, en vez de darle un aumento criminal para acabar con tantos envejecientes, tantas madres solteras, tantos hombres solteros que tienen niños y están viviendo solos con esos niños. Más sin embargo, es lamentable lo que está ocurriendo a nivel de esta ciudad con la intranquilidad que vivimos como inquilinos. Muchas gracias.
For you to understand the suffering that we go through, and for you to just prize or reward these criminal landlords instead of actually thinking about the children, thinking about the elderly, thinking about the single mothers with kids, the single fathers with kids, the parents that are living under these circumstances, and it's unfortunate that we're here in this situation. But thank you so much.
Thank you. We still have a few more minutes to sign up. If you have not signed up to speak, you're welcome to do so. Please just go to the back there and give them your name.
Señores, todavía tenemos unos minutos más para que se inscriban si quieren hablar. Tienen un poquitico de tiempo. Simplemente váyase a la mesa que está atrás e inscríbese si quisieran hablar.
Ray Dietz?
Good evening, all. My name is Ray. I'm a member of the PSL, the Party for Socialism and Liberation. You'll notice I'm speaking with you all and not these clowns up here. I'm also, thank you, I'm also here as a representative of my tenant association, which has been fighting our landlord for years after they illegally converted thousands of apartments from rent stabilized to market rate, paying over $1 million in kickbacks to contractors. And when New York Attorney General Letitia James caught wind of this scheme in 2022, do you think that we as tenants were reimbursed for being overcharged? Just a guess. Yeah, no. Do you think that our apartments were returned to rent stabilization? No? Mm-hmm. And do you think that the landlords were punished at all? Right, exactly. The Attorney General actually accepted $4 million for her own coffers and left the tenants out to dry. Now, is that right? No, it's not right. We demand a restoration of rent stabilized and rent-controlled units that were lost through vacancy decontrol. New York City must be a rent-controlled city where no tenant pays more than 20% of their household income on rent. Tenants, workers, immigrants, everyone here in this room, we make this city run, and we should run this city. We should live in dignified housing. We shouldn't have to beg these people for scraps every single year. When 19 people were killed by landlord neglect at Twin Parks in East Tremont in 2022, did Eric Adams denounce the landlord Rick Gropper? No, he didn't. Did he even publicly mention that Rick Gropper was one of his housing advisors? No, he didn't. What did Eric Adams do? He blamed the tenants for using space heaters to survive the winter. Shame. Shame. These landlords and their representatives, they don't see us as humans. They see us as numbers on a spreadsheet, as pure profit. We are being used as tools for these landlords and for the criminals in the White House and City Hall so that the ultra-rich can get even richer, so they can spend our hard-earned money to bomb Palestine and Libya and Iran, name a country. They want to invade it. We don't need to have any more hearings about rent increases for tenants. What we need are hearings to hold these criminal landlords accountable. What we need is justice. What we need is justice, and we're going to organize until we get it. That's all.
Thank you.
Hello. Okay. I don't think I'm going to follow that up very well. My name's Marley Lindsay. I represent the Full Times Tenant Union Association. I'm not going to say anything new. I just want to share our story and our experience with our rent stabilized units. So we have two units, two buildings, 514 and 516 West 135th Street, which are owned by Watermark Full Time Management. My wife, myself, and a few other tenants who were here earlier have worked on organizing the building and speaking to tenants about the issues that have been going on, some of whom have lived there since the 70s. And what's remarkable about it is the uniformity of the problems. We thought we were the only ones having our ceilings collapse in our bathrooms like seasonally, like once every six months. But it turned out, some of the older tenants have had this going for 10, 15, 20 years. And when they've brought this issue up to our landlord, they were pointed to as the problems because you're the older tenants who are paying not enough in rent. We can't actually maintain these buildings. That's the sort of response that they were receiving, and it's the sort of response that some of the newer tenants were receiving, too. But the thing is, every time one of these rent raises occur, somehow there's still not enough money to fix the building. So I'm left a little confused as to why we continue to raise the rents in part to maintain housing stock if that housing stock is being failed to maintain. So I have a small proposal. I feel as though every building with 311 issues at the very least, but maybe issues across the board that have been raised by tenants, should be addressed before they get to implement a rent increase of any sort. And heck, let's roll back the rent because I know of multiple people in our building who have sustained severe injuries as a result of these collapsing ceilings. So that's what I've got. Hope you'll consider it. And yeah, appreciate everyone out for being here.
Thank you. Thank you. Rochelle Thompson? Ms. Thompson?
That would be me.
Please.
I'm carrying my handbag like Fanny Lou Hamer. Good evening. My name is Rochelle Thompson, and I am known as the First Lady of Jazz in Harlem, USA, the continent that I love. I also do housing, and I also represent the seniors in the court because we are having problems with the court. We're constantly going to court when we have paid our rent by certified mail return receipt requested, and like me, have a credit on my rent. We are also concerned, as one of the gentlemen said, that when we are in our apartments and the tenants are aging, they are not making the apartments made for them. In other words, there's a high bathroom, they're not giving us grab bars, they're not doing anything that would help an elderly person. I'm here today also. I have lived in my building for 40 years. I won two Supreme Court cases. One I wrote on my own, one the late Michael Harding helped me. And I did 18 HP actions. In front of my building, there is scaffolding. And the huge cry about that is, how come the landlords cannot fix when they see that the front of the building is crumbling, how come they're not fixing it? Why are they waiting for scaffolding to be put up? I've asked them to take care of this. Our letters go unanswered. They're rude to us. We have a new management company. They asked for us to pay our rent by four options, but you didn't meet with the tenants about the scaffolding of the building and the facade falling down. Let's get to eviction. 51% of residents in central Harlem are being evicted. 58% of that are women. So that right-to-counsel law is BS because it is not helping us. I had to fire four of my attorneys. So I come to you today to say, we have to be American again. We have to be human again. We have to look at the country of our heart, as Helen Keller would say. We have to stop this atrocious cruelty, as Frederick Douglass would say, because you are killing us. We're being killed. And here's another thing. Why would we not want to pay our rent? Why is there this over culture and this underculture that we do not want to pay our rent? It's like going to dinner. If you're going to dinner, you better pay that dinner bill. So I'm asking, I'm asking for someone to listen to us, to meet with us. Gloria Holmes, Apartments LP, Donna and Francis Seymour, they're, you know, they don't even show up in court. They don't even want to change a light bulb in the public areas. They wanted me to make an appointment. This is ridiculous. Ridiculous. And I know, as I've listened to these stories, because I've been going to court for 32 years, no one should have to go through that. And I've won every time because I've told the truth. And everybody, keep fighting. I'm on your side. Keep fighting. I'll come to your block and sing a song for you. I got a call tonight. Keep fighting. We will win. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Ching Wong?
This is okay, right? Okay. I'm Ching. I've been living in Harlem my whole life. I am a member of IEEE Optica and American Chemical Society. Today, I'm a grad student and tenant organizer living on a stipend that has not increased with inflation. And on behalf of my fellow students, we ask, not beg, that you freeze the rent or consider a negative rent increase. We're scientists. We don't beg. I have met many students and scientists who can barely afford to live in New York as it is, and you, as the driver of high prices in New York, are responsible for the brain drain that will happen if this continues. My professor lamented that we were losing talent to Boston because for years there were affordable places, a roller skate trip across the bridge in Boston. There is no place in New York like that, and you know why. You will know that the last time a brain drain happened, something happened that started with Manhattan and ended with Project. I am not threatening you today since none of my peers are nuclear physicists, but my classmates are leaving for China, Europe, and the Middle East when they graduate because they can't afford to live here. We can live without landlords, but can any of you live without chemists, computers, engineers? Can you afford to lose quantum scientists to China and the UAE? We have been told by our own institutions to tighten our belts when it came to the stipends, and here you're crying that you need the increases to stay afloat. Pathetic. When the first computers were used in 1940, it cost the equivalent of $6 million today. Today, you can buy a computer for a few hundred dollars thanks to science and their magn- Today, you can buy a computer for a few hundred dollars thanks to science, and their magnitude's faster. Why exactly does the same apartment, the same fixtures, and the same piece of land from 1940 have followed a reverse course? Scientists are talking to each other about rent laws, they're hungry, they're angry, and they can organize. My landlord literally waits for people to die to bring apartments up to code, makes up stories why he can't fix the dangerous conditions for elderly tenants, cries and lies to the city that they died alone, saying that their families forgot them instead of telling their families that they died in squalor and he's taking back the apartment. He spent $100,000 on renovations this year to raise rents, and pennies on repairs, and hundreds in fines for neglecting these repairs. My electricity can't handle modern appliances, and he uses my rent increase to pay the fine for not fixing my electricity instead of actually fixing it. Yet I'm one of the lucky ones among my classmates because I pay the least in rent. This is a disgrace, and you chose this every time you increased the rent.
Thank you. And that concludes our public testimony. Everybody who signed up has testified, so thank you very much. I'm asked for a motion from the board to adjourn. Second? Okay, with that, thank you, and we're adjourned for this evening. Thank you very much.